Good morning, everyone. I will call this Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. It is August 26th. It is 10:01 a.m., and we will start with a salute to the flag. And I see that John Flansburgh from the City of Reno is in the audience. If you could please lead us.
Please join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if we could please have the roll call.
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Vice Chair Jean Herman is absent. Commissioner Clark?
Present.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Andreola?
Present.
Assistant County Manager Dave Solara?
Here.
Chief Deputy District Attorney Mike Large?
Present.
And I am Yvonne Strickland, Deputy Clerk.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into our public comment if ACM Solaro, because please lead us into that.
Absolutely. Item number three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. The commission will hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole, and virtual public comment may be taken when facilities available. We will also have virtual public comment in Incline Village on item 16 as well.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk?
First up, we have James Stewart, followed by Terry Brooks.
It's a lot of pressure being the first one this time here. Good morning, Commissioners and staff. My name is Jim Stewart, and I'm one of the candidates for the Open Space and Parks Commission, and it was suggested I come to this meeting to introduce myself to you. So hello, everyone. I decided to apply for this position because I'm a Reno native and just have so many great memories of the times spent in our parks, and really countless hours over my lifetime recreating in parks and on the trails and the open spaces as a child and as an adult and with my kids, and now with my grandkids. And as a result of that, I've become very passionate about our incredible parks and trails and open spaces. And I believe I can provide a pretty unique perspective because of my in-person use of so many of the parks in the area and the trails. And I would love to play a more formal role in preserving and enhancing what we have. I live a two-minute walk from Rancho San Rafael, and I use that park daily for a variety of reasons. I take my dog every day year-round to the pasture off-leash area that's really non-negotiable in my house according to my dog. And I ride my mountain bike through the park to access the trails up on Peavine, and we attend numerous events that occur in the park over the years. And sometimes just a walk through the arboretum in those areas just to clear my head. I also have grandkids that play soccer throughout the valley, everywhere from Lazy Five to South Valley, so I get a pretty broad perspective of what's going on in our park system. And I read somewhere, and I'm really paraphrasing this, but I truly believe this, that the quality of community can really be judged by the quality of its parks. And I think that's very true, and I think we should be very proud of our parks and trails and open space and what we have here. I also like to think that my many years on this planet have given me, rewarded me with a certain sense of common sense and objectivity and an ability to analyze and solve problems and come up with answers to issues. Just to close, I would be really honored to serve on this committee. I would love to help try to meet the challenges and to maintain and improve our magnificent parks and trails and open space. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I don't know if it's appropriate to have questions or not, but if it is, I'm more than willing, and if not, again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Terry Brooks, followed by Steve Dolan.
It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today I came here to face the act of discrimination when it comes to health and race. When people who own a lot of housing discriminate against people because of their race, then a lot of people live in worse housing because of their race. And because a lot of schools were once segregated by race, kids then lived with less education because of their race. And because they had less education because of their race, they wound up getting fewer and lower-paying jobs because of their race. And because of lack of employment, many also lacked health care. So they wound up living most of their lives without having any health care. But now things are somewhat better, and health care workers don't refer to race. They use the word ethnicity instead when referring to a case. The true meaning of the word ethnicity is a subcultural group within a multicultural group. And by using the word ethnicity, not only is it more accurate, but it has much better publicity. So by using such an accurate word, such health care workers see humans as they are instead of using the words that discriminators say they are. Health care workers do their work to keep people alive, so they do their best to help everyone survive. It's true that some ethnicities are more susceptible to some diseases, so instead of discriminating by race, helping all ethnicities pleases. Helping people of all ethnicities to recover and stay alive eventually helps the whole human species to recover and survive. When I studied anthropology in classes at the university, one thing I learned about evolution was the value of diversity. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back if I'm healthy enough to be here that day.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Steve Dolan, followed by Maureen McElroy.
Do you see the red button?
It's on now.
There you go.
Thank you. Madam Chair and fellow Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Steve Dolan. I've lived in Incline Village on the North Shore for 33 years, raised both my children there. And I'm the Director of the Friends of Third Creek, which is about 250 strong, and it's a nonpartisan nonprofit entity up there on the North Shore. We are not in favor of the item 16, amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110 to update Articles 220 Tahoe Area and 220.1 Tahoe Area Design Standards. I fought the Oakland Fire Conflagration in 1991, and the insurance company evaluation of that fire stated that it was in most part caused by high-density housing on narrow hillside streets. Can you say Tahoe Basin? Can you say ADUs? Can you say higher buildings? And no off-street parking requirements? That's what you'll be voting on today with item 16. That's pretty scary. Specifically in item 16, it wants you to provide for the reduction in parking minimums, and that means no off-street parking for condominiums and things like that. Modify minimum setbacks, making them smaller, crowding the streets again. Modify encroachment, further crowding the streets. Modify standards for accessory dwelling units, allowing ADUs on less than one acre. Chair, you once told me you weren't going to touch that about four years ago in 2021. Apparently, we're touching it now. Then there's a legal speak involved in this, which basically says the owner must hold harmless this board, because your lawyers have told you to say that, because you know and they know how dangerous these changes in this amendment process will be for North Shore. It's already dangerous, and this will make it more dangerous. The buzzwords for this are TRPA provided for a Vegas North concept that's 20 years down the road. The monetization efforts are identified by...
Thank you.
Maureen McElroy, followed by Patrick Gubbins. Ms. McElroy has copies to be distributed.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I appreciate it. For the record, my name is Maureen McElroy. I'm calling on our Commissioners today to agendize a discussion of the use of our county jail in its support of ICE enforcement. Before Sheriff Balaam's approval request for the Homeland Security Grant can be considered, there are still many unanswered questions that must be addressed. For instance, how are ICE detainees logged into the Washoe County Sheriff's Office booking system? We need clear data that confirms Sheriff Balaam's statements about immigrants with criminal charges versus immigrants without criminal charges who are detained in our county jail. How is information about inmates being shared with ICE by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office? Other inmates are logged in such a way that the public can view or access that. Is that the same for ICE detentions? If not, why not? If ICE detainees are in our jurisdiction, how can we ensure that their families can confirm their presence in our facility? Also, there is some question about discrepancies between booking report numbers, what ICE reports and what has been heard anecdotally from the public about ICE detentions and ICE holds. In early May, during the expanded ICE operation in northern Nevada, although the Sheriff's Office announced publicly that the jail held 45 people detained by ICE, a Homeland Security ICE press release stated that there were 53. But the Washoe County Sheriff's Office booking reports for the same days did not add up to the same amount. This raises the question of how those brought into the jail are booked or logged in. Is there a separate booking system for these ICE detainees? If so, how are these bookings, how are those bookings tracked and recorded? These discrepancies in data raise distrust and doubt in the veracity of the data and the stated commitment to transparency. This is why I ask the Commissioners today to have an agendized conversation about these questions before they consider approving Sheriff Balaam's Homeland Security Grant approval request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Gubbins, followed by Pam Dar.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager, and County Professional Staff. My name's Patrick Gubbins, and I've been a resident of Washoe County for 19 years. I've applied for the Open Space and Regional Parks Commission, which I think is a wonderful opportunity, and I'd like to give back to our community. I'm an outdoor recreation enthusiast. I camp, backpack, snowshoe, and ski. I also mountain bike ride when I have a bicycle that doesn't have two flat tires. I've also enjoyed a very, very wonderful career as a Parks and Resource Manager. I've worked at various levels of our government, including county, state, federal, and a special Parks and Recreation District in Colorado. During my career, I've been responsible for human resources, financial resources, cultural and natural resources, fire management, public safety programs. I've been on many teams and enjoyed them, and I've been on many partnership teams, which I really think partnerships are really the way to problem-solve, taking a team approach to solve problems. I'm all about that, which is another reason why I want to join your commission. I started my career as a Park Ranger with Boulder County Parks and Open Space in Boulder, Colorado, and I retired from the National Park Service in 2018 as the Deputy Superintendent of Lake Mead National Recreation Area. I've also had a wonderful career with BLM, and as I shared with you, I have worked with multiple agencies at all levels of our government, county, state, federal, and a special recreation district. I would like to give back to our community, and I want to thank you for your decision and considering me for this wonderful opportunity. Thank you very much, and it was a pleasure meeting you, and I hope you have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Pam Dar, followed by Mark Pritchard.
Good morning, Pam Dar, Precinct 6411. It's almost that time of year coming up. Anyways, I'm going to be knocking on doors. So I didn't plan on being here, but something happened last Thursday morning that I want to bring to everybody's attention. I think there's a big responsibility sitting right in front of me to address this issue, and this is the homeless. There's a lot of work being done, and I get it, but we are missing something. We're not preventing the possible attack on individuals with people on the streets. We can send a team out to address it, maybe after the person's hurt or killed. I almost witnessed that Thursday morning at 4:30, down the street from where I live, while two women were trying to stalk their business. They were so shook up, they were standing there numb. I'm trying to call Sparks PD. It was very upsetting. I know that people are working hard to address this, but we can't have them wandering around dangerously, willing to attack somebody. They were very verbally attacked. The person walked away and came back and verbally attacked them more. So this is something, we have to get ahead of it. It's dangerous. I've heard stories of friends' daughters in midtown being chased by the homeless. No one needs to live like this, and no one knows to be hurt, and if they're taking a bad trip, they can hurt somebody. That's one thing. I have three minutes. I've got two more issues. I read where the Governor stands with the, he wants to shake the label of a sanctuary state. There's a lot of responsibility in front of me on that also. What are we going to do to address that? We only have so many resources. There is such a thing as Cloward and Piven, which we are being stretched, and the middle class is being stretched, and we can't take much more. People can't afford to buy houses. My husband bought a house at the age of 22. I understand it's at the age of 33 now. I also understand that you can't buy a house nowadays unless you're in your 30s. How do you start a family? And we have more rentals than ownerships in this state? We're going the wrong direction. I have two cats and a turtle. I'm worrying about your children and the children of the people in this audience. It's not being selfish or attacking. I'm just saying what I'm seeing. I've been around the block a few times. I'm, you know, the last portion of it. My last thing, visa reviews, very much needed. I almost got run over by an SUV at Trader Joe's because, in certain countries, you have to look out for the car, they don't have to look out for you. Imagine walking into Trader Joe's, an SUV passes you by, throws it in reverse, and backs right into you. If that was grandma or a little kid, probably would have been dead. Thank God I do work out. I'm pushing back on that SUV, screaming at the top of my lung. She yelled at me, wondering why I was there. So these are the concerns of us trying to be safe out in the community. With all this fast growth, with all these people coming in from all, we're supposed to be a melting pot, not different little divisions, a melting pot where we assimilate and be safe and be happy and enjoy this wonderful place where we live. Thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Mark Pritchard, followed by Beau Walker.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Pritchard, for the record, I'm an organizer with Biggest Little Action Group. Thank you for your service as Commissioners to this community. I'm speaking today in response to the Nevada Current story about the presence of ICE in the Washoe County Jail and the agreement and the grant that the county has applied for with respect to making the jail facilities more hospitable to ICE. You know, when the public sees through videos taken by citizens on the streets about the behavior of ICE and what they're doing on orders from above to the immigrants in our country, I think the general impression is a revulsion at the tactics of ICE. I believe they bring a shame upon our country, and that should lead us to question wherever we encounter them, including in our county's relationship with them. So I'm asking a particular question, which is, I know that every relationship with the federal government has a degree of obligatory parts and discretionary parts, and I would like the audit of their relationship with our county to include that question. How much of what the Sheriff's Department and the jail does now with ICE is discretionary? I would like that to be visible on the audit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Beau Walker, followed by Frank Wright.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. I have applied for the open position on the Parks and Open Space Committee, and I just wanted to get in front of you guys and give you a little bit of background about me. I was raised here in northern Nevada in Washoe County. I'm a graduate of Washoe County School District. Spent a lot of times on parks and fields growing up. It kept me out of a lot of trouble. I say I came from a non-traditional household, as kind of a free-range child, and I needed those spaces to kind of teach me the lessons of life. I've received a bachelor's degree from the University of Nevada in secondary education. I've received two master's degrees, one in athletic administration and coaching and one in educational leadership. I spent 12 years in the classroom, teaching government civics and AP US history, three years as a dean of students, working in student relations, and currently serve as the athletic director at a local high school. I have a strong background in youth engagement and working in recreation and athletics, which aligns very closely with the role of parks and open spaces in our community. I've experienced leading and collaborating with very diverse groups, schools, families, and community organizations. I'm skilled in long-term planning, policy implementation, and stewardship of our community resources I've done throughout my career. The first job I ever held was working for City of Reno Parks and Rec. I was lucky enough to work on the Moana baseball field, which unfortunately no longer exists, but I have some great memories doing that. I also worked at the Idowile Fields and at Monroe Street Gym. Again, it gave me a place to kind of get away from my household and experience athletics and learn a lot of the lessons I've learned that I've taken professionally I learned on those fields. I have a deep lifelong connection to Reno and Washoe Park System and appreciation for the impact they have on the community, especially on my life. I'm the proud father of three daughters. All are very active in sports, which gives me a really firsthand perspective on the importance of accessible parks for our community, and I'm committed to ensuring equitable access for all of our residents. I'm an avid outdoorsman. I enjoy hunting, fishing, and hiking, most of which I do in Washoe County. Northern Washoe County has some of the most beautiful areas in the western United States, and I love to spend time up there with my family. I believe in sustainability and protecting these open spaces for our future generations, dedicated to promoting respect and honor in community service, as I've done throughout education and in the park system. And then I went back and read some of the past meeting logs. I see that there's a problem in South Reno where I live. I live right by White's Creek Park with a place to run your dogs, and I've really struggled with that, and I've illegally run my dogs at White's Creek Park, which maybe I shouldn't say here, but I understand the importance of needing a space for my active dogs to get off-leash, and in South Reno, we really struggle with that. So I was complaining to my wife about it, and she said, why don't you get off your rear end and go do something about it? So here I am. I look forward to the opportunity of potentially serving on that committee, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Frank Wright, followed by Lynette Cardenale.
Frank Wright, I'm a resident of Incline Village. I'm here to speak about an illegal tax fee that is being assessed to all the property owners. This fee is greater than some of the property owners' ad valorem taxes. I've talked to your district attorney about this. We need help. This is an illegal assessment that has no statutory limit. The amounts that they're charging this year has put a lot of people in financial harm. It's willy-nilly. There is no assessment background for it. They don't go use any kind of financial need. They just make up a number, whatever they can think they can get, they go for it. The money doesn't go to anything that helps the people that are living there. It's just horrible. It's something that I think the county needs to really, really get involved in for your benefit. I say that you guys are collecting this fee, that makes you the getaway driver for a robbery, because they are stealing money. I went before the IFGID Board, and I asked him, give me one thing that this is providing my property and my family. Nothing, not one thing. They collect it, and it's not assessed evenly. It's not distributed among the community evenly. One parcel has most of the poor residents in our community, 75 motel or apartment units. They have 75 rec fees, and they pay over $105,000 in this rec fee for these people who live there, and they can't even enjoy most of the amenities that this thing supposedly is paying for. Across the street, there's 400 units on one parcel. Both of these are on one parcel, 75 on one, 400 on another one. The woman with 400 only pays one rec fee, one. How can that be? In a system that we have for ad valorem taxes where things are assessed by value and have a benchmark understanding, this has no benchmark. This is just thrown out there. It needs to be addressed. IFGID is under fiscal watch by the State Board of Taxation, the Committee on Local Government Finance. Their books are cooked. Everything is screwed up up there. We need help from the county. By collecting this tax, you're aiding and abetting this collection. It's not right. There are other people that are looking at this, as you're probably well aware of by now, and this is not something that's going to have a happy ending. You can be ahead of this and get ahead of this and take care of this, or you can ignore it and let it continue, but it will be taken care of in the next couple of years. I guarantee it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynette Cardenale, followed by Ed Powell.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I've been a resident of Incline Village since 1992, and I've seen it changed in a direction that is really not acceptable to the parcel owners. As Frank Wright said, the rec fee has become uncontrollable. We are not a cohesive village anymore. Since COVID-19, people have moved in that are new to the area. They've been propagandized by the, I believe, the board that is in the seats at the moment into thinking other than what Incline Village really is. We were a cohesive village for parcel owners to maintain the equity for all people that live there, and now this rec fee has been outlandishly applied to people who are there living on a fixed income, raising families, and do not have the opportunity to enjoy all the amenities that they are forced to pay. And therefore, I feel that it is destructive to the continuity and the vitality of Incline Village that is supposed to be a loving and caring community. The trustees have not taken into consideration that they are in fiscal watch. They have added a new building at the beach house for, I believe, 11, between 11 and 12 million dollars without public input. They have raised the rec fee that is unbelievable, about 400% on each parcel owner that has to pay it, or they will get a lien on their home. I'd like to bring forth to you what kind of fee would bring a lien on another person's loan that is not considered to be a tax. It is absolutely abhorrent to the people of Incline Village. We go before the board, they just do not pay attention, they go uh-huh, uh-huh, and actually classify the residents, that are few, as demonized as the ones that are holding back the community when we were the foundation and the grassroots of that community. It is not a cohesive experience anymore, nor a good experience, to live there under that type of tyranny. that type of tyranny of government, having forced to pay something like $1,375 per parcel unit, raised from a few hundred previously. And that's all they do, is pass the buck and blame the previous board. They are not cohesive to the people of Incline.
Thank you. Ed Powell, followed by Joel Blakesley.
For the record, my name is Ed Powell. Modifications to the Washoe County detention facility funded by an ICE-related grant need to continue to be topical over the next several months. My current concern is over current ICE tactics. I am not sure if these tactics are common in Washoe County, but videos from elsewhere in the United States are common. These tactics include masked kidnapping with excessive force, often without a judicial warrant, and leading to the disappearance of the subject. I would like to ask the Washoe County Board of Commissioners as our elective representatives to pass on to Sheriff Balaam, another affected official, elected official, and the Washoe County District Attorney also, our concern, displeasure, and revulsion at such tactics. Please request a statement from the sheriff as to his department's support or non-support of such tactics here in our county. It would be useful to have such a statement sooner rather than later, given the apparent criminality of these tactics. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joel Blakesley.
Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, Joel Blakesley, speaking for the Coalition for Nevada's Wildlife. Speaking of the wild horse issue today, which is later on the agenda. Just want to make you aware that we've got a resolution going out to the Congressional Appropriation Committee to follow the Wild Horse and Burrow Program. Specific to our county, we support a fencing project for public safety to keep the wild horses in Washoe County off of the roadways and out of the neighborhoods. With that said, we understand that's a Band-Aid approach and doesn't solve the underlying population of overpopulation. For instance, the Virginia Range appropriate management level is 300 to 600 animals, and is currently at 4,000. Fertility control is likely to be brought up, but that's not a solution. It doesn't reduce the current overpopulation by one single animal. Even if you could do it, it doesn't reduce the population. I mean, if you've got 4,000 animals out there and half of them are mares, how are you going to get close enough to dart 2,000 mares? How are you even going to tell which ones you darted? I mean, you know, one bay horse from another horse, you know? There are 938 species of wild animals that share the ecosystem. There are 3,189 plant species out there that deserve to have consideration. Thirty-nine of them are endangered. Our habitat is being destroyed because we're ignoring all these other plants and animals that deserve recognition over one species that dominates the rest of them. If I had 40 dogs in my backyard, I'd probably get a call from Animal Control. If I let my real estate become infested with rats and have some of the water turned off and the rest of it leaking, I'd probably get it condemned. That's what's happening to our public lands. We need to deal with this. Jenny and I did a presentation at NACO last week. There are seven counties in the state that have adopted resolutions of ecological disaster from these animals. The idea that these horses should be wild and free sounds great on paper, but it makes about as much sense as letting mice and rats run wild and free in your kitchen. In closing, please support the fencing for public safety and consider joining the other counties in a resolution of ecological disaster. Washoe County has the most animals of anyone in the state, as far as I know.
Thank you. Jenny Luciette, followed by Rhonda Tyser.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, other members of the Commission. I thank you for allowing me to speak on not only Item 1, but some federal issues as well. I've got over 18 years of professional experience regarding rangeland management, focused mainly on wild horses, feral horses, and stray horses, whatever you want to call them. I am speaking on behalf of four NGOs. That's the Coalition of Nevada's Wildlife, Coalition of Healthy Nevada's Land, Nevada Wildlife Federation, and Rangeland Wildlife Wildhorses LLC, in addition to Rangeland Scientists here at UNR. We represent tens of thousands of members of this county. We absolutely support the continuing fencing project, dealing with public safety, not only for people, but for those animals themselves. We will work closely with the Department of Ag to ensure that that continues to be made. Having said that, we also ask that the horses on the state park, bird nesting area in Washoe, on the east side of Washoe Valley, plus the 100-plus horses near Andrews Lane that I passed by this morning, right next to 395, and also other urban residents in Hidden Valley, Damone Ranch, that we talk about relocating those animals once that fencing is completed. We ask that you also prioritize all of the nearly, over, as Joel said, 2,200 species of plants, 39 of them endangered, and also over the 900 species of wildlife that are also affected by the gross overpopulation of these stray horses. We ask that you also be transparent in working with not only the Pyramid Tribe, but also BLM and Forest Service, to pay attention to those horse populations that are also increasing, that people don't even talk about yet. Those are in Cold Springs, Spanish Springs, those areas, and actually are now being stated that they're part of the Virginia Range, which if you look at the map, they're not. Finally, we ask Washoe County on the federal level to focus on what Joel spoke about, or at least have a discussion. There's seven counties here in Nevada that have proclaimed an ecological disaster on the federal level due to the gross overpopulation of wild horses. Washoe County, you guys, I think you understand, this isn't just about the Virginia Range or even the federal horses. You've got the Pyramid Lake, and you've got eight herd management areas that are managed by California that those 3,800 horses are not even being numbered. So this is the time to do it. We're past that point. Thank you again.
Thank you. Rhonda Tyser, followed by Doug Flaherty.
Today, I submit to you the petitions of over 260 Incline Village and Crystal Bay residents. Each of these 260-plus signatures represents a life. They're not just names on a page. They are employees, and fathers, and mothers, and grandparents, and retirees, the able, the disabled, the aged, and others. They're all who make up our small village of Lake Tahoe. As your constituents, today we are asking for your consideration, and yes, even your compassion. We're asking you to see our faces and feel our concerns. You see, no matter how diligently we create defensible space around our houses, and no matter how thoroughly Chief Summers and his crews create defensible space on our public lands, the stark reality is that any wildfire that starts in or near Incline Village of Crystal Bay will force an immediate evacuation. And all of you have heard the same newscast we have and are as informed as we are. There's no reason to think we would fare any better than those in Lahaina or Pacific Palisades. We all know sudden evacuations are at best difficult and dangerous, and at worst deadly. But what you commissioners may not truly get is that allowing dozens of more residences to be built, and hundreds of more residents to reside along one of our only two evacuation routes, could very well result in many residents' deaths. Planner's contention that these TAP amendments, increasing affordable housing, will contribute to the health and safety of our residents is nonsense. Hundreds or thousands of residents burning or suffocating to death is a much greater health threat than the poor mental and physical health of some residents who can't find affordable housing. Incline Village's geography demands special planning, so I ask you on behalf of not just these 200 signatories, but all our residents, to please wait for the IVCB evacuation study now in process, and do the proper EIS and evacuation timing analyses. Get the data to realistically assess the likely effects of the TAP amendments before adopting them. We implore you to wait for the data, please. It's the right thing to do, and thank you.
Thank you. Doug Flaherty, followed by Lisa O'Sullivan.
Doug Flaherty, representing myself as an Incline Village resident and TahoeCleanAir.org. I'll just combine the comments. They're similar. The proposed Development Code Master Plan Amendment findings and desired outcomes listed within the amendments are speculative, arbitrary, and capricious, and created in a manner to give unsubstantiated deference to Washoe County and TRPA's misleading housing ideology, and are highly unlikely to achieve their stated purpose. Moreover, these amendments are highly controversial and do not reflect the community's interest, as demonstrated by the approximately, as of this morning, 262 citizens' petitions, and they're still coming in. We only started this last Thursday. These petitions represent significant new substantial evidence citing public safety wildfire evacuation concerns. No government agency, including the TRPA, Washoe County, has the right to mandate code amendments upon the Washoe-Tahoe citizenry or Washoe County, which will make it harder for Washoe-Tahoe residents to safely evacuate during a wildfire. Based on consistent and substantial public comments, new substantial evidence since the 2021 Tahoe area plan revision, including consistent public concerns about traffic congestion and wildfire evacuation risk within the Incline Village Town Center and surrounding Incline Village-Crystal Bay neighborhoods, and new significant substantial evidence in the form of approximately 262 petitions we're talking about and are being submitted today in opposition to the amendments, and whether anybody likes it or not, the new substantial evidence of the independent Lake Tahoe Basin wildfire evacuation analysis. Any reasonable person may conclude that the proposed amendments are likely to exasperate already unacceptable public peril evacuation times in and around Incline Village. This is currently estimated by Washoe County to take six hours. The Washoe County constrained roadway system, compounded by public peril F-rated intersections and roundabout choke points, as well as dramatic increases in north-nashore basin visitors within adjacent to Incline Village Town Center, as well as Crystal Bay, significantly heightens public safety evacuation risk, this by degrading current public peril evacuation time.
Thank you. Lisa O'Sullivan, followed by Liz Lord.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to talk about the negative impact that this fence project, the Nevada Ag Fence Project, has brought to our valley. I live in Steamboat, and nobody is talking about the added fire danger. The horses have historically been there. They graze our, you know, we have very tall, rocky mountains. These horses have done an amazing job over the years, eating down knee-high, flashy fire fuels and noxious weeds. The first thing that many of us realize when they put these fences, because they didn't do it on the BLM border that borders the homes, they ended up putting it three-quarters of the way up on this big hill. So that leaves 250 acres of BLM land that no longer gets grazed by these horses. It also leaves hundreds of private land. So, you know, there was no thought at all to the fire danger that they added. We have target shooting ranges all up above us. On June 7th, there was a Skinner fire that started at one of them. We're just really lucky that it wasn't a windy day, and it was a rocky backdrop, but there's many other sites that people shoot the big metal targets. So we are very concerned, and we are asking for help to get a revision to this fence. We want the horses in to do their job, and we also think it's really cruel and inhumane to block them from every water source in our area. South of the fence, they can graze, but they're not going to if there's no water source anywhere around. I don't see how they're going to block them from Little Washoe, because this BLM fence went across many UTV roads where people recreate, and they just throw them down. People are not happy that the fence is there, and they open it, they go through, and they don't get out to put it back up, so that allows the horses in. But I just think that, you know, so many of us in the valley are already worried about fire danger, and that this added, you know, this added so much more. I have 19 acres. I have taken down fences, and I've seen it firsthand. In April, I can't even walk out on my property. By August, they've cleared it, and I can actually use my land. So if they're talking about overpopulation right now, they are in our valley, but as soon as the city fence comes in, they won't be able to be there. There are actually 62 on Rhodes Road in the pasture, not 100. And they did an amazing job taking where they're eating down. Last October, a power line came down in there, and thank God they ate it down, because there could have been a major fire. It was a very windy day, and luckily it was just smoldering, and the firemen came. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Liz Lord, followed by Penny Brock.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Liz Lord. I'm a concerned citizen. I'm here to speak about the wild horse situation in our area. One of my main concerns is the wildfire danger, that the horses are eating the fuel off the range, which can help mitigate this. My other concern is the fact that we have fenced our wild horses from their normal water source. I spoke personally with Governor Lombardo a few months ago, and he said they would be trucking water up to the range for these horses. As of now, I have not seen one sign of this. I hike up in that area. The lakes, they say, are dry, are there in available form, are dry at this time of year. If you really love a horse, which a lot of people in here supposedly do, but have they ever seen a horse die or an animal die of dehydration? It's a horrible, horrible death. This is a travesty to these horses. What happened to Nevada's bills protecting our wild animals, which should include the horses? Have we become California? Have we, do we not care about our wildlife anymore? I've heard stories about hunting horses now, people going out and allowing people to go hunt horses. I hope that's a fallacy. A bill to fund overpasses to protect people and the wild animals from accidents is being held up in the Senate, I believe. I could be wrong about this, but this is what I understand. Please help our horses. They were here a long time before we were. If you look into the eyes of a horse, and you will see their beautiful soul, you would not want to destroy them, and the fertility program is working. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Penny Brock, followed by Richard Minor. Penny Brock, followed by Richard Minor.
Penny Brock, for the record, as you know, Nevada is being investigated by the Department of Justice and some other federal government agencies for 2020 elections. I believe it will trickle down into Washoe County, and in this presentation, I will show Think about what is already known about local elections in Pennsylvania, Georgia, Arizona, Nevada, Michigan, and Wisconsin. All of the voting manipulation was done on a county and local level. Maricopa County, Arizona, was a key focal point in these exact voting issues during the audit. Now consider, when DHISISA says exploitation of these Dominion voting system vulnerabilities would require physical access to individual IMHCX devices, access to the election management system, or the ability to modify files when they are uploaded to IMHCX devices. We have all of these in our elections department down the hall. We can check each of these three points affirmatively to know what is known about voting manipulation. Yes, local election officials had physical access to these devices. Yes, local election officials had access to the election management system. And yes, local, our local election officials have the ability to modify these files. All three of these apply to our elections department down the hall. When you recognize the already alarming efforts of local election officials to manipulate the outcome, what the CISA advisory is factually stating is that the system has been built in vulnerabilities that permit local election officials to modify the voting outcome on electronic machines. That is exactly the claim that has been made of all the election integrity groups who have been raising the alarms along, around the country. CISA notification is affirming the local election officials can indeed manipulate the electronic voting machine outcomes. How is Nevada/Washoe County involved in this? Well, out of this article, which CNN published, it shows that Washoe County, right here, this is a picture out of Washoe County, a ballot tabulator using Dominion voting systems is seen as the Washoe County Voting Register gave a press tour of their facility and explained the process ahead of the midterm elections, April of '22. Thank you.
Richard Minor.
Later today, under Agenda Item 16, you will be given an opportunity to vote on approving or not changes to the Tahoe area plan for Washoe County. But in addition to voting yes or no, you have a third choice, and that would be to table your decision until the evacuation study for which the county has already received over $170,000 in the donation to run its course. That study is expected to take about a year from now to be completed and will be the first really comprehensive, publicly-supported study of wildfire evacuation from the Lake Tahoe Basin. To me and probably most common sense observers, it's a no-brainer to table or otherwise postpone your area plan revisions until this study can be completed. The lives of hundreds of North Lake Tahoe residents and thousands of visitors could be in your hands. Thank you for thinking seriously about postponing that decision today. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have nobody else signed in in chambers, we do have emails to be placed on the record.
Thank you. All right, we will now move into Item 4, a CM Solero.
Good morning. Item number four is Commissioner's County Manager's Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Includes Boards Commission Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Feature Agendas, and I do have just a couple for you today.
Great.
As I'd mentioned earlier, on Item 3, Item 16 will be virtual public comment available in Incline Village, if anybody would like to take us up on that. Just as well, a reminder that the Incline Village General Improvement District General Manager will be here on September 16th to provide a report to you all. And then the final reminder is that we will have a special presentation on the state of the county on September 2nd in this chambers. The event is called Washoe Work: Serving Our Community, and will be a series of videos highlighting key areas of the strategic plan. The meeting is noticed to begin at 11:00 a.m., which will be immediately following the Board of Fire Commissioners' meeting, allow us to, excuse me, have public comment, and then we'll go into recess for a 2 o'clock showing of that, where all of the commissioners will be in attendance, so really appreciate you being involved in that. So again, we will also have ARPA funding recipients out in the lobby, so if anybody from the public really wants to understand where the ARPA dollars have gone to help our community, some of those organizations will be available to provide that information. So that's what I have for you today.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Garcia, okay. Commissioner Andreaola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to share, one of the, actually, two of the public commenters already shared this, but I am on the NACO Board along with Vice Chair Herman, and during the, one of the committees is Public Lands, and there was a presentation that was specifically geared towards looking at what the Coalition for Nevada's Wildlife is considering and asking the 17 counties, although seven counties have already signed on, to look at a resolution declaring a state of emergency resulting from non-compliance with the 1971 Free Roaming Wild Horse Burrows Act as written and amended. And there are, and I'm happy to provide this to staff, but there are over 120 organizations, including the seven that were already noted, and I would like to ask that we look into this and we look at having this agendized for consideration by the board to adopt this resolution, and so that's a request, an agenda request. And then, I almost feel like I can't go without sharing Christmas in August. So, yesterday, as, if everyone doesn't know, I will share, that the state of Nevada has been chosen by the Forestry Service to have the U.S. Capitol Christmas Tree. There's been a lot of activity, including ornaments, and each county made a tree skirt, and that's been turned in, but yesterday, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Forest Service, along with Nevada Lieutenant Governor Stavros Anthony and the Division of Outdoor Recreation, announced a fourth grader essay contest for Nevada fourth graders. The details are available on the Forest Service website, and the due date for the submission is September 15th. The lucky fourth grader who wins the essay contest will be flown to DC and be able to light the Nevada Christmas Tree. This is the first time that Nevada has been chosen in the history since the 1960s of a state being chosen to be represented at the U.S. Capitol during the holidays, so I want to make sure all fourth graders and their parents as well, and schools, I've sent this to all the schools that you could imagine, and I'm hoping that we can continue to spread the word, so again, Christmas in August.
I love it, what an incredible opportunity.
It is, it's been amazing, and if you want to see all the activities throughout Nevada, you can go onto the social media site, U.S. Capitol Christmas Tree, and you'll see all kinds of different activities of the entire state of Nevada coming together to represent the silver state.
That's so great. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'll be brief this morning, I just want to thank everyone that comes down to our county commission meetings and offers their public opinion. It's very important for us to hear what the public is thinking about all the issues. You know, sometimes we don't like what we hear, but sometimes we need to hear things from the public, so thank you for everyone who's made public comment today. Next, I would like to talk about a phone call I got early this morning from a board member of the senior, Washoe County Senior Services Advisory Board, letting me know about certain seniors are kind of afraid to go into the senior center right across the parking lot here. They drive up, they get out of their car, they walk in, they see some activity that they don't find appealing, and leave. So our seniors are being forced out of here, and the allegations are folks from, from the homeless folks are taking over the senior center, and as we've been reported to many times, that a large number of the folks at the senior center or at the CARES campus are seniors, and I'd like the county to explore putting in senior activities at the CARES campus, so the seniors that are housed there can have activities right there on their campus versus coming around across town to come over here. So again, I'd like to ask the county to look into that. And then lastly, there was an article in one of the local publications, Beacon Press this week, which was supported by county documents, which I shared with the press, about our meeting last week when we donated money to the toy run here in Reno, and somebody was so outraged that they either sent in an email or placed a phone call and threatened all the commissioners, and also threatened to run over people that they saw on motorcycles. I'd like to ask the county to look into that further, both the Sheriff's Department and the DA's office, and find out if they sent this threat electronically, let's find out who sent that threat, and send somebody out from the law enforcement community and talk to these folks, because when somebody makes a threat that they're going to step on the gas and run over anybody they see on a motorcycle, I think the public needs to be aware and understand that, you know, this may or may not happen, but so many times when we hear about acts of violence in the country, people have talked about it in advance, people have shared what they are going to do, and then later on, they're involved in some type of mass violent situation. So I'd like to have the county take charge of this and find out who this person is and find out what their agenda really is, so please, if we could have that looked into. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I just wanted to point out to members who are concerned about the use of the detention facility and the county's relationship with ICE, we will be having a presentation by the sheriff on his quarterly report of the detention facility, so that will be September 9th, and it will be a presentation, so if you want to tune into that meeting, please do. And if that is it, then we, I just found out from the clerk, that we somehow missed a public commenter from Gerlach who has been waiting at the library, so I'd like to bring them back for Item 3, and then we will move into our presentations. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
We have Kristi Evans in Gerlach.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me on there?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. So for the record, Kristi Evans, I'm a resident out here in Gerlach, I really appreciate you taking my comment. I just wanted to join in this morning, as you all know, it is Burning Man time out here, and we have been in touch with our county commission support team about an agenda item for our upcoming Citizens Advisory Board meeting, and I just want to make the commissioners aware, because we're going to be requesting some additional support in the future from the county out here, specifically in circumstances where weather, like rain, closes the Playa Access, and the town of Gerlach is under pretty stressed situations with people around here, and the main issues that we are addressing is traffic management and sanitation. We simply don't have enough restrooms out here to handle the influx of hundreds and possibly thousands of people who are stuck. So, we understand, and I just want to say for the record, I'm not against Burning Man, it's a very important economic driver in our community, but what we are going to be looking to is additional support from the county when these often predictable situations arrive, like rain, so I just want to make you all aware, and hopefully, at least Commissioner Herman and maybe some others of you can attend our CAB meeting on September 11th, because we definitely want to get more of your support in the future, and that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, I mean, I had meant to say we're going into our proclamation and then our presentation, so we'll now move into Item 5 for Proclamations 5A1. Mr. Solero.
Item 5A1 is a proclamation to proclaim the month of August as the Emergency Management Awareness Month. Looks like Commissioner Garcia will go down and read the proclamation, and we have the team from Emergency Management here, our small but mighty team, to accept that.
Come on up. Thank you for being here today. Whereas Washoe County is committed to the safety, security, and resilience of its residents, businesses, and visitors, and whereas emergencies and disasters, whether natural, technological, or human caused, can strike at any time, requiring coordinated preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation efforts, and whereas the Washoe County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Program, in collaboration with local, state, tribal, and federal partners, plays a vital role in planning for and responding to emergencies that impact our community, and whereas emergency management professionals work tirelessly to build community resilience, educate the public, and ensure that critical infrastructure and essential services are protected and restored quickly following a disaster, and whereas public awareness, individual preparedness, and community engagement are essential components of a strong emergency management system, and finally, whereas recognizing August as Emergency Management Awareness Month provides an opportunity to highlight the importance of preparedness, honor the work of those in emergency management, and encourage all residents to take proactive steps to protect themselves, their families, and their neighborhoods. So on behalf of the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners, we hereby proclaim the month of August as Emergency Management Awareness Month.
Absolutely. Thank you for your great work, and we'd love to hear from you if you have anything to say.
All right. Thank you, county commissioners. Emergency management is one of those professions that is often behind the scenes, but we just appreciate the recognition to share awareness about emergency management, so just thank you so much.
And your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, for the record, Jessica Adams-Lopes.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much. You want to say anything else? Okay. All right, wonderful, thank you so much for all you do, and be prepared, make a plan, right? Okay. Yep, stay informed. Thank you, team. Okay, we will now move into our presentation, 6A, oh, excuse me, proclamations, we need to make a motion on that. Commissioner Garcia, was that in the form of a motion? Okay, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andreaola. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on that item?
There is none.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Now we'll move into 6A1. Mr. Solero.
All right, Item 6A1 is a presentation and possible discussion with the Washoe County Assessor, Mr. Chris Sarman, so take it away.
Welcome, we've been looking forward to this presentation.
Good morning, yeah, okay. Chair, Hill, Commissioners, staff, good morning, yes, Washoe County Assessor, Chris Sarman, happy to be here today, so thank you for the opportunity. I certainly think as an elected official that it's important that we can present to you the state of our office and to the public as well. I think with ongoing discussions of expenses, revenues, ultimately budgets, that we have a small discussion on the dynamics of property tax, so that's what we're here to do today as we move forward. So as you know, our office is foundational for the funding of essential services. know, our office is foundational for the funding of essential services. So, we'll start there. The assessor's office is essential, right? Washoe County was established in 1861. The Washoe County Assessor's Office, 1861, before we were a state, our office was created. The Nevada Constitution adopted in 1864. Of course, we're Article 10 within that constitution. So, again, being defined by those provisions of Nevada law, we believe, you know, we are an essential service that was enacted to support essential services. We know that 52% of the revenue from the general fund, it stems from our office. Because of those interests, we have, we're involved across the state, right? Not just with our county, but because we're defined by statute, because we're essential. We're working not just within the county or municipalities, but across the state. Department of Taxation, we're working with the Tax Commission, of course, legislation. As we look at legislation, let's look at what we are bound to do by statute. If you guys want to go through our book, this is, this is our Bible. I know I only have 10 minutes, so we'll get through one page if you want to do that. But it's big. And so, let's just summarize that for you. Our duty is to discover, list, and value all property that's subject to taxation, unless it's otherwise exempt. And we can go through some of those exemptions, hopefully. We are to provide for a just valuation with a uniform and equal rate of assessment. We want to be fair and equitable. So, stemming from that mission is our, that statutory duty is our mission. We want to efficiently produce and manage fair and equitable values that are built upon accurate property records by an impartial, transparent, and courteous staff. A lot of awesome, important words within that mission. One of the, I think some of the best words there are courteous staff. We have an amazing staff that does a lot of things. So, let's talk about that. As we meet that mission, as we meet that duty, as our staff performs the work that they're doing, we have some really, some big numbers here, right? So, we have 192,000 parcels in which we are performing the discovery, listing, valuation process upon. As, as a result of doing that, we are producing and managing, maintaining an asset base of about $95 billion. It's a big value. It's taxable value. This year, we, through our reappraisal process, we, we put on about $1.7 billion. That's just through the market variables that exist in appraisal. Another $1.8 billion that was through our discovery process, whether that was through permits, whether that was through our error review. In total, it's about $3.5 billion that we added to the role as new taxable value. It's a big number. Jumping into our personal property accounts, our business accounts, we have about 30,000 of those. And that doesn't really fluctuate a whole lot year over year, which is kind of interesting. But overall, it's about $5 billion as well. The $1.9 billion that you see there, that's a little deceptive. Businesses come, businesses go, new assets are rolled. And so, that is, it does represent the amount of work that our staff is doing, but it's not necessarily year over year that you're seeing that additional value. So, what does value mean in terms of revenue? Let's look at that. So, the treasurer billed about $811 million this year. That stemmed from personal, or from property tax. This year, when we looked at that $1.7, that $1.8, that $3.5 overall billion resulted in about $54 million of new taxes added. This number, of course, isn't represented of the abatements that have been issued, the exemptions that have been issued. And those are some big numbers as well, right? We've got about $244 million that's been abated. We have about $128 million that's been exempted. We'll go through that, hopefully. So, in arriving at those numbers, how are we doing that? Well, when we talked about that appraisal process, when we talked about that, those market values, we're reappraising every year on an annual basis, the 192,000 parcels. That's where that's coming from. When we're looking at that new value, we're looking at new parcels that were created, about 1,700. We evaluated 24,000 permits, 23,000 parcels records that we looked at through our review process. We did audits, 260 of those. Those resulted in, in big numbers as well. And so, as we're doing that, you know, we defined a lot of what we do as in the success of doing that is through our appeals. And if you look at 139 appeals across 192,000 parcels, across 30,000 accounts, it's a 0.07%. We're doing a fantastic job, we believe. So, that's a, it's a, something to be proud of for our office. Some other big numbers, the 25,000 transfers that were processed, that's sales transfers, right? So, we, our staff looks at the ownership, the legal descriptions, make sure that that's all accurate. It's not the recorder, but our office that's doing that. And then our appraisal team is looking at what the market value of that is through those sales. 800,000 visits to our website, that's a big, big number. People love our website. Everywhere I go, everywhere I talk to, they love the website, right? We get a lot of hits on that. A big number, 255,000 mailings. We all know how expensive mailing is, are right now. If there's a way to, to eliminate that, let me know. We can talk through it. All that work is being done by how many people? 63 full-time employees of our office. That's down from 85, which was prior to the recession. 59 employees in 2012. And so, we're doing a lot of work with relatively small amount of full-time employees. But we're proud of that. At top of our org chart, we put the public first. We work for them. Of course, coming off to that, stemming from is Nevada law, we're administrators of that law. I'm an elected official who is an administrator of that law. Following down through that chain of our org chart there, our organization, we've divided that into two sections. It's really kind of defined here for us in statute. We have our appraisal sections, and then we have our support services that come from it, whether it's mapping, and then, of course, exemptions, abatements, those kinds of things. And we have a, we have our own tech team, our assessor tech team. That's our department of programming costing. They do a lot for us as well. What's it cost for that staff? Our budget's 9.4, 9.5 million dollars. It's interesting, in our office, I've heard that you guys had the discussions about 80% kind of being the number of, of labor costs, and our office is about 91%. So, 9% of it is left for, you know, paper, pencils, whatever, desks, everything, computers, right? Well, we have some tech fund for that. But ultimately, we're at 91% of our total costs is tied to labor. What's it all mean from a different lens of, I guess, business model, right? We know what our investment is. We know that our budget is about 9.46 million dollars. We know what the benefit is. We put $54 million under the role this year, new taxes. I want to point out that that is a, has an cumulative effect too, right? Next year, that's going to be 108 million. And it just builds and builds and builds. So, when we look at that ROI for our office as an office as a whole, is about 470%. It's a nice number. We're still doing more with less. Obviously, that's the direction we've been doing since, and I put up there, established in 2012, because we really have, you know, when, when, back to the recession and what we had to do, and what we've done to come forward with that is a lot. This year, we've restructured our office a little bit. We've had a lot of retirements, a lot of institutional knowledge that's been lost. So, we've been able to fill those positions with some really qualified people, some knowledgeable skill sets. We're doing a lot of cross-training. And obviously, with technology that advances, we're still trying to do a lot of training. And we might still see some of those reclassifications going forward as well. The technological developing program, I just want to point out that you guys are aware that our tech services team, well, we had won the national award or took third or something like that for the digital surveys. A lot of that, we believe, part of that anyways, comes from our team. We built, we're looking at AI. We do some really cool things with AI. We're streamlining processes. We're automating. And we got a lot of work to do with that. And some, some pretty exciting stuff as we move forward. But ultimately, it's automation, right? We're trying to get to that. And it doesn't take away from the duties of our office, or necessarily eliminate, but it does kind of change, I think, the skill sets. So, more to come on that as we, as we go. Something I think is really cool, we, because we have to, we built out some internal liaison teams, so that our, you know, for example, we have a technology liaison team. It's not necessarily their title, but allowing our assessor tech programmers to actually program. We have, we utilize certain people in our office that are tech savvy to be able to help people with their computers, their phones, that sort of a thing. Same thing with communication, right? As, as things come down from other departments, whether it's language accessibility, something like that, we've built this communication liaison team to kind of help with that. So, trying to build relationships always. Hi, guys. I'm Chris Sarman. Doing more with less going forward. We're still, we're still trying to build out an appraisal team. We're trying to build an internal audit team. We think that there's actually some really good ROI, ROI with that. I mean, you've already seen what it looks like as an office as a whole. So, anything that we're requesting, I think really, we could look at that and say, okay, what does that look like in terms of revenue? We don't want, obviously, we need to stay within, within the realm of our statutes, and we still need to remain fair and equitable. But there are still some opportunities, I think, that exist. We're still going to be developing, deploying new technologies. I put up here, it's expensive, right? I mean, we can't get away from the fact that technology is expensive. And I just want to point out, I've always said, and I'm going to continue to say, I think that for every convenience, sometimes there's an equal and opposite inconvenience, right? And technology sometimes does that. Sometimes it opens up this window, or you got to have more training, or whatever it might be. Technology is really cool, but in, in a lot of cases, it creates inconvenience too. So, just something to think about. Legislative changes, I just want to point out, AGR 1, I mean, these are, these are the type of things that can really impact our office from efficiencies is our new laws, right? And this year, every year there, legislation's in place. We're looking at maybe watching 30, 30 bills. Maybe it's a confidentiality bill. Maybe it's a senior exemption bill. Maybe it's something. This year, we had AGR 1, which is the reset of depreciation. I know a lot of people support that from that look from our office. There has a lot of questions and concerns, especially with deficiencies, just because it becomes more complex. But AB 377 is one that did pass. And I want to point this one out. This one's really cool. Ultimately, we have abatements in our office that people can apply for a 3% primary tax cap on their residence. As it stands in statute, they need to apply for that. So, a lot of times, people buy a house, they go through the whole closing process, they go through title, they get a piece of mail from our office, they throw it away, they don't look at it, and then 10 years later, they say, wait a minute. Hey, I'm supposed to have the cap. So, what AB 377 does is it's remove that burden from that taxpayer, and now we're putting that on the declaration of value. So, now they're going to be sitting there at closing, they can actually fill that form out on that declaration of value. We don't have a record of that. And it saves us from having to send out 20,000 mailers, which saves us money, right? So, it's a win-win-win for everybody. And I think there's all sorts of different ideas that could still apply in that fashion. So, just wanted to point that out. I think that was a really cool one. Where are we at? I don't know where I'm at in time. But key takeaways in the ass, of course, again, we're essential. I think investments will, will improve returns. We've always been fiscally responsible. We're doing more with less. Change is the only constant. And as we work through these changes, you know, we just ask for your support when we come in front of you. Do you guys want to talk about abatements, exemptions? I've kind of outlined that here. There's all sorts of different kinds of abatements. Don't be confused by just the tax cap. That's just one abatement, right? There's all, there's other abatements for energy and lead abatements, economic abatements. The same thing with the exemptions. You have some personal exemptions, whether you're a veteran, blind, or surviving spouse, government exemptions, of course. Airport's one, though, that, that we should probably talk about at some point in time, whether it's the city of Reno, or us, or somebody. But there's, you know, when you're looking at the airport land, it's its own taxing authority by statute, and they're not actually taxing the buildings that exist there, whether it's a FedEx building or something of that nature, right? I think that maybe there's an escaping of taxation that could be looked at. I mean, they're leased in the land, of course, but just certain things like that. And I don't want to go into too much detail. But anyways, there's nonprofits and economic exemptions as well. So, that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
That was a great presentation, and your office seems fascinating. You do a lot of history and planning and development and investigation, and you've got people out in the field. It seems really interesting. And I have a few questions, but I want Commissioner Clark to start, because he used to be in your shoes, and I know this is a passion of his. So, Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your presentation. It's long overdue, in my opinion. I think a lot of folks don't really realize what, what is taking place in, in that department of yours. You know, we've got seven elected positions here in the county, countywide positions. The district attorney, the sheriff, the public administrator, the recorder, obviously, the assessor, the treasurer, the clerk. I mean, you could go through life, if you're real lucky, and not have any interaction with the sheriff, and not have any interaction with the DA, and not have any interaction with the recorder, or maybe even the clerk. But everybody, and I mean, everybody in this county has some interaction with the assessor's office. And, and folks that don't even live in this county have interaction with the assessor's office. If somebody gets in their car today and drives from, you know, Chicago and makes it out to Washoe County, and stops and has a flat tire, and gets their tire fixed, or stops and buys a meal, or stays overnight in a hotel, all of those folks are having an interaction with pub, with the personal property and/or real property, landlords, tenants, everybody, business owners, people who go in the store and buy something. All of those, personal property, the, the store fixtures, the tanning booths, the pizza ovens, the forks, the shot glasses, the flat-screen TVs, the bedspreads, the pillows, every single thing in this county is subject to taxation. You know, it rolls off the tongue real fast when you say it, but if you really dissect what you said here is, we're here to discover, list, and discover, make a list of, and value all property that is subject to taxation, unless exempt. And that's probably this building would be a good example of that. And government, and schools, and police department, and sheriff's department, there's, there are things that are exempt. But everything else, people don't realize forks and knives and, and, and everything that you use in a restaurant is subject to taxation. Everything. And that cost gets passed along to the consumer somehow or another. And so, that's what I mean by everybody's connected with this. Next, your department values all of this, and it ends up, you know, once it gets distilled and processed and, and worked through the system, through the treasurer's office, you're responsible for 52% of everything that, that the county is able to pay for. And it's important to note in this presentation, you talked about the added value. I keep harping about that up here, and people look at me like I'm making this up. But if you look at this, the, the numbers that you bring in with new construction and properties that are permitted, and properties that maybe somehow or another, something escaped taxation, maybe they put in a new fence, maybe they put in, maybe they drilled a well, things you can't even see from, with the naked eye from above ground, you're still involved because it's an improvement to the property. The number of properties, and how you're able to manage all these properties for about $50 apiece. And we talked the other day about how you had to, time and time again, big corporations come into this very chamber and to the Board of Equalization, and try and get their values reduced. And sooner or later, you need to get an outside company to come in and do an appraisal, so it isn't just you versus the big corporation. You told me about Walmart, getting one of their, just one of their buildings appraised, folks, costs $30,000. Is that correct? Is that a right number?
Yeah, correct. Expand upon that, or, yeah. It's $30,000. So, Walmart is, is a, everybody's familiar with Walmart. They've appealed their values for the last 10 years, and we've had a lot of success upholding our values at the state and the county level for that. This, last year, at state, those values were reduced. And, right, so, we had to look at it from the standpoint of, okay, now, this has been established as a big box retail-type building. There's value being lost out of that, out of revenue, right? And so, from a fair and equitability standpoint, we kind of, we had to make that stand. So, we got that fee appraisal done. Had we not done that, we would have seen the, the Costcos, the Home Depots, that all those values would have came down, which is, which is a cost to the county. So, we hired outside consultant to Mike's point, and it's a $30,000 bill, right? So, when you look at the work we're doing, it's, we're not, we're not charging $30,000 a, a property, if that's where you're going at with that.
Sure, sure. And I want the public to understand that for $59 or $52, whatever it shows on your side, when you divide your budget over the, the vast number of, of properties that you're in, in charge of appraising, I mean, just a residential appraisal these days, we're pushing $1,000. And so, if you had to reappraise all of the 192,380 parcels, I mean, that's a serious, that's billions of dollars, just to, to have the data that you have at your fingertips. And to be able to do it with the staff that, that is less than before COVID, and less than before... and less than before the great economic turn-down, and yet the size of the percentage has grown by, what's the percentage of the growth here in the last seven or eight years, 10 years here?
Well, I could tell you that from the asset, you know, we're looking at 95 billion. I know that back in 2012, now, economic components tied to that, but that was about 50 billion. So we've doubled the asset base over the last, basically, 10-plus years, so.
Doubled the workload.
Yeah.
And doubled the amount of valuation, probably. And with the same amount of folks, and when, and so this is, I'm trying to, I'm appealing to my fellow commissioners, and to the other folks at the budget departments here. When you need an extra two or three people to keep everything running smoothly, this isn't just building an empire, this is something that is needed. The workload, I mean, there's a point in time where people get demoralized if they have to work too much, and you need to have staff that can fill in. And the return on investment, their paycheck versus what they bring in, is bill hundreds of millions of dollars, if you had the extra couple of folks. I'm trying to help you get ready for the budget season with that. But you're doing a great job, and I think the public, and everybody in the county, and everybody who benefits from anything that the county does, should look at the foundational basis of it. One of the original offices created, when this county was created, was the sheriff, the assessor, and what was the other one? Those two start.
Treasurer.
Treasurer, the assessor, and the sheriff were the three departments that our founding fathers thought were essential for the county to have a good health. So I appreciate the good work you're doing, and this report should be available to everybody to understand what's really taking place. So thank you for the good work, and Howard, and Tony, and Laura, thank you for being here. All doing a great job, and manage a lot of property, and do a great job of it. And they don't want anybody to pay more than they need to. We've had that happen in the county before. This is, everybody needs to be treated fairly. This is one you want to be a number. You don't want anybody to pick on you because of who you are. Just be a statistic, and get treated equally, and I think you do a good job of doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Clark, and Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you. Thank you for a great presentation, and thanks to your entire mighty, small but mighty workforce.
Small but mighty, I like that, yeah.
You can use that if you'd like.
I'll steal it from you, yeah.
I do want to congratulate you. I was, I accepted the award that was your award, only because I was at Naco National. But it was a national recognition, and you should be very proud of that. The National Association of Counties meeting had a special presentation by the Center for Digital Government, and Washoe County took third, thanks to you and the team. So congratulations on that. I want to, I know I've had this discussion with you, but I'm very, we're all clear now that your staffing level is 2012. Even though I think that technology always comes into play, as it evolves, it becomes more efficient and effective, and everybody uses it in various ways for various reasons. But the reality is, is that to assess every parcel that needs to be assessed, from a mathematical perspective, would be at 100%. And I'm wondering what the percentages that you're able to reach. Is it 80% of the 100%? I mean, or are you reaching the assessment of the 100%?
So, it's a great question, actually. So when it comes to reappraisal, the appraisal process, we are doing 100% every year. We're mandated by statute to do once every five years. Now, if we do that, you're absolutely talking about loss valuation, loss revenue, right? You're also talking about errors, and lawsuits that we don't want to bring up again, right? Incline, that was a big thing. We don't want to talk about that, and we don't want to go there again, right? So it's, in my opinion, it's super important to absolutely hammer home annual reappraisal every single year to capture market as it swings, okay? So we are doing that 100%, but to your point, now, when we're looking at accuracy in property records, and picking up some of these things that may not have been permitted, or things that were skipped, or things of that nature, there's lots of value there. As you can see, it was like 1.8, right, billion. We're not reaching that goal of 20%. I mean, we're only reaching about 10%, 15% every view. So there are opportunities in that regard. When we're talking about personal property, you know, the audits that we are doing right now, they're tied to a contract that we have with TMA. In fact, we'll be to the table with you guys on that this year again. The returns on that are phenomenal. But what we're missing with the TMA audits is that they are doing big, large-scale casinos, things like that nature, right? What we're missing is that upper tier, that we, if we had that audit team, we could build that out a little bit differently. So 0% on that. So there's opportunities, for sure. But yeah, as far as the reappraisal, we're bound in statute to do it, and we're reaching that at 100%, which is good. But that appraisal value is tied to capped value, right? Because as market variables, the values might double, but you're still capped, 3%, 8%. But the real value that you're seeing is through that new discovery process, that new that's being added to the roll, whether it's through permits or error review, or something of that nature. So new assets, we find, so.
Well, given that we are all going to be having robust discussions about the budgets, and some of the constraints that are going to be discussed in the future, I think it's really helpful to create a business plan in terms of, what do you need in additional resources, and what does the ROI look like? And so I would just ask that that be incorporated in the preparation, so that we have the facts. It's really interesting, when you're talking about government and essential services, we don't think about funding in the sense of it being a revenue-like-a-business. But if there are opportunities that we are leaving on the table, I think it's really important for us to look at the expert that you are, and your staff, in putting that plan together, and I think that's really essential, in providing that information. So I would ask that you put that together if you see fit. And it sounds like you have other suggestions, too. On the last slide, you talked about shared services. And I think that there would be a great opportunity to look at, what does that look like? It was the highlight in yellow. Maybe it wasn't the, yeah. We asked for the support of our office.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We asked for the support of our office as we continually navigate changes at various levels of the state, county, cities, and of course, our own office. And so what I'm saying is that if there's a way to leverage the services of all of the elected officials, you and I spoke about that for full transparency, maybe that wasn't the right one.
Yeah, so I think the slide is right there, sharing resources.
Sharing resources. But the point is, is that if, I think putting something together with that would be really helpful, too. What does that look like? And I think that we all have to start thinking differently. Just because we've done it in the past, doesn't mean we're going to do it in the future, as we're looking at significant constraints that are budgetary, and everyone's looking at that. So I think we have to look, I said this before, for the quarters in the couch. Except you have an opportunity, your quarters are more than quarters. And I think that if we're missing those opportunities, and leveraging in efficiency, and looking at what that is, if you could build that, that would be helpful.
We can do that. We've undergone a lot of change, but we'll get to it, yeah.
Thank you. But anyway, thanks for all your hard work, and congratulations again on your national award.
Oh, thank you. Washoe County's award, but we contributed.
Absolutely. Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you so much. No questions, I just, I'm really glad the public got to see and hear the wide breadth of services that you and your team provide. Not only in terms of your skill set, but the geographical area that you cover. It's incredible. And I appreciate your scrappiness in trying to find those opportunities, and just leveraging everything you possibly can, because you are absolutely right. The ROI of this office is tremendous. We couldn't do the work that we do in providing these essential services to our constituents. So it is a really important discussion that we had today, and congratulations on all your hard work. So I guess I do have one question, though. You've been in this role for three years. You talked about change is the only constant. What do you anticipate your office is going to see in terms of change in the next three, four years?
Well, we really went, undergone, I mean, since taking this position, obviously, we had a lot of changes with regards to corn fairy and this. And then we just really recently had about 15% of the turnover in our office, at high-level positions in our leadership roles, that turned over, right? And so navigating through that, getting those reclassifications and that org chart reconfigured was a first step in that. Now, obviously, that institutional knowledge that has left with that, we still have people that are coming in with that knowledge, right? But communication channels, right, and how that looks, and how we're communicating going forward, and how we're building ourselves out as a team, as you looked at, like, building out liaison teams with our own office. I think you have a lot of new professionals that are coming in with skillsets that are above and beyond what they used to be, right? So a lot of them are very technologically advanced. And so we have an assessor tech team, but within a lot of the stuff that we're looking at with building out programs and applications and things like that, that skill set, and building that, and understanding that, and communicating that, is going to be a big challenge, right? And not necessarily a challenge, but something that we have to stay on top of as far as what's out there. What's this person doing, what's that person doing? Bringing that together, and honing that in. I definitely, as far as like valuations from our office, one of the big changes, too, is just, we need to get to the field, right? And so we're doing a lot of the work online, which is great. But we also, we have to look at, there's a lot of times when we have to be out in the field, just like building inspectors and that sort of thing, right? So what we've seen kind of change in that regard is that where one person might go out, now it maybe takes two for safety standards and things of that nature. So just trying to deploy that. From, I still feel strong about our region as far as a place to want to be. Obviously, there's still demand here. People want to live here, it's affordability, right? And so it's still coming, we're still growing. I don't see personally a decline necessarily in that growth in revenues going forward. But I don't know, did I answer the question? I just, sometimes I ramble. Okay.
Well, thank you so much. Yes, we are so impressed by you and your team, and really excited to hear your future plans, and how we can support your office. And I agree with the board on, put together that proposal on opportunities for missing revenue with those audits. If folks are not disclosing their home improvements, and, you know, getting more staff out in the field, that's essential. I know when I was a planner, that was something that you have to do. You have to go out and see what's actually happening on the ground. So we want to support you and your team to do that as well. And I'm curious, on the abated and exempted properties, I know there's like a lot more to dial in on that information, fascinating information. And I think people forget that some of these abatements are also green energy abatements, and have, you know, an investment long-term for the community as well. But I'm wondering, in that big book you just showed us, are they detailed out in there? I'm just curious, like, and I don't want to give you any homework if this exists somewhere, but, you know, in a pie chart, that 244 million abated, and then the 128.
Words allocated to? Yeah, we could do those allocations for you. We should be able to do that.
Fascinating, because I am curious of the 128 million exempted, how much of that is that economic, you know, abatement?
Government, religious, all those things.
Yeah, and how that's broken out. And then I think you bring up a really good point with the airport, and I think that's going to be a very interesting discussion for the community to have moving forward, because there's a lot of redevelopment that's happening in that sphere. So we need to have a good discussion, because of that 128 million exempted properties, they do come back on, some of them do come back on the rolls, because they're a 10-year abatement, a 20-year abatement, like what we saw with Tesla and Story County.
The windfall over there, yeah.
Exactly, they've got their first abatement coming back to them. And some of these properties, we will never see come back on the rolls, and yet they are impacting government services and quality of life in Washoe County.
Yeah, and some of it, very big value, yeah.
Exactly. So yes, I'd love to see a detail of that, not to give you homework, but if you've got it available, that would be so interesting. And really looking forward to continuing to work with you and your team, and thank you for your commitment to Washoe County and your service.
Thank you very much, thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Our pleasure. Okay, we will now move into Presentation 6B1, Mr. Solero.
Item 6B1 is a presentation on the unaudited fiscal year 2025 year-end general fund budget to actual revenue and expenditures. And Ms. Cook and Ms. Hill are here to provide this presentation.
Now we can talk about what we're doing with the assessor's work.
Yeah, we're kind of the downers in the room sometimes. So good morning still, Commissioners. For the record, Lori Cook, Washoe County Budget Manager. Just putting a disclaimer up front, we are still closing out the fiscal year '25 books. This information is dated as of August 21st, and it does change. You'll get the audited financials by, I think, December. And so we'll have the final numbers, final information at that point. So what we are looking at is a familiar, most familiar for me, the sources and uses, and this is the general fund. The consolidated tax that is in the orange, as of today, we do not have our final C-Tax distribution from the state. They had a change in their financial system, and they've experienced some challenges. And we can't get, really get any information right now, based on what's going on at the state. So we can't really get a lot of updated information on financial systems with their shutdown. So, but right now, we're trending at lower than estimated. The SECRT AB104 is a separate, it's a supplemental city-county tax relief. And we get that separate, and it is, we do have all of our distributions related to that, unless there is a final, final trip, but we do have two June distributions. So those are the variances right now, that are material variances when we look at, where do we think we were going to be, and then where are we as of, you know, last Thursday, the 21st? The other item to, and the next slide, we have some taxable sales information. But the other item in here that shows as a source, that shows in our revenue, is the URGL. So that's unrealized gains and losses. That is a, it's a book value, it's an accounting, it's not cash. So when we see a positive number, it basically increases, reflects in our fund balance as an increase. If it was a negative number, which we have had, it depends on the market, it'll show as a negative number. And then we have transfers in, so total resources or sources at year-end is that 501 million, which is slightly different than the estimated. But we still have, and I'll just say, C-Tax is approximately 32% of all general fund revenue, and we have about a 12th of that missing right now. We also had a distribution at the end of January, which was the November distribution, and it was about 60% of what we would have anticipated. And a lot of that has to do with the state's change in their system. So it was a $7 million distribution, we would have expected something around 13 million. So we, and we don't know, we can't get reconciliation. Taxation is indicated, that's not something that they're going to provide, that as they reconcile that and get things fixed, we'll just, it'll just trickle in with our other distributions. So that's kind of where we are, related to C-Tax. The reason this is such a challenge is trying to project where are we going to be. So when we look at Washoe County taxable sales, and this is through May, this is available online through the Department of Taxation. They have local government page and have revenue statistics, so this is publicly available. If we look through May, we see that Washoe County taxable sales, the prior years are the entire year. So through May, when we look at 2025, it's that 11.4. So taxable sales in Washoe County are actually up 3.9% based on the state's data. Our distributions are down 2% total, but that includes an offset. We have seen an increase in government services tax, so that's the registration, comes through registration through the Department of Motor Vehicles, and real property transfer tax. So those are properties when they get sold, or they go on the books, that tax that's associated with that. When we look at the. When we look at the, and I'm sorry for the acronyms, but the BCCRT, which is the basic city-county relief tax and the supplemental city-county relief tax, which are part of the fair share, the AB 104, 1991 and 93, if I remember, those could be wrong dates. So those were implemented. But what we see with those distributions when we go through May is that it's down from prior year at 3.2%. So really what we're looking at, if we're, if we're trying to do, it doesn't always follow exactly. There are timing issues. Sometimes there's refunds issued and the taxable sales gets adjusted in a different time period than the distributions. But what we're really seeing is an increase in taxable sales, but a decrease in taxable sales distributions. So it is a challenge. We are doing our best, having conversations with our partners, our local partners. And we are not the only agency that is having concerns, issues, challenges related to this. Of course, it's the entire state. So it's not Washoe County alone. But this does impact, you know, the city of Sparks, the city of Reno, Trucking Meadows Fire Protection District gets a C tax distribution. So this isn't just us. But it makes it very difficult to, where do we think we're going to be when we're looking at estimates? Or what's happening locally with taxable sales? And how do we address that when we plan for resources, when we see this kind of disconnect between the information that's available to us? So again, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. I'm just saying, this is what we're seeing. And so this is where we are as of for May on taxable sales, but also May on our distributions. We should be getting one more distribution. The other half too, when we talk about where did we end the year and what do we look like, especially compared to our estimates, is when we start talking about expenditures and uses. And for that, I'm going to hand it over to Kathy.
So as Washoe County continues to wait for its final revenue sources, currently like Lori said, we, this is through August 21st. We are still working at closing the books, so expenses are still coming in for the uses. Right now, based upon the budget, the estimate, the estimate complete that was used, we are over budget in salaries and benefits for Washoe County. Slightly over than what the estimate complete was looked at. And then for services and supplies, we are under. So there is the benefit there. However, the final number, the ETC that was anticipated and using salary savings that were not recognized was using, anticipating using $12.9 million of fund balance. Currently, as of August 21st, we are at 13.7 million use of fund balance. Hopefully that gets better. But that's where we're at as of August 21st. Is that our last slide? And there we go. That just reiterates the use of fund balance, not the goal of the county to do that. Obviously, trying to minimize uses of fund balance. Next presentation, hopefully we will have August closed. We will still be going through the audit process. These numbers are unaudited and are changing daily. And the final audit should be presented to the board in December.
Well.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. Oh, it is a bummer, but it's good to have that information. I mean, we knew we were going to be using fund balance this year, as we have been using fund balance because our expenses cannot keep up with our revenues. But that is interesting about the C tax piece. And please let us know what this board can do to support your work and bringing together the counties and cities on this issue. Because we, you know, I'm hearing the same thing from Trucking Meadows Fire. They're very concerned as well. And I know that the rest of our communities around the state are having the same issue. So I'm not, has the state put together a plan about how they plan on addressing this with the county?
We have not had, received anything concrete from the state. We are waiting with bated breath, understanding that they have some challenges that they're trying to work through there. It does affect all the entities of the state, and I'm sure they're aware of the sensitive nature of that. In conjunction with that, there's also a rule for financial reporting that you can only go 60 days past the end of the year. So we're hoping to get these numbers and money by August 31st, which would, if we don't, it'll change our financial reporting landscape for sure.
Right. And there isn't any precedent for account, like asking for an audit of the state? Certainly, the county can't do that. I'm just curious.
Well, the state is audited the same way as the county is. If you want to do a specific financial audit, whether it's a fraud audit, revenue audit, I don't know the course of action to take on that.
Okay. Fair enough. Commissioner Garcia. Okay, Commissioner Andrilla. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a couple of questions, but this issue of, I guess, late payments, I mean, or getting this money out and distributed to the rest of the county? This is, this is a statewide issue? This might be a good.
Hi, Commissioner. Yes, my understanding is a state issue. We, the state, when they distribute the consolidated tax, it's basically the same time. We have from, I guess it's an advantage in a way that the real property transfer tax, that is collected by the county recorders. So when those properties, and then that goes into a due to the state, it goes to the state and then they give it back to the counties. As well as the government services tax is recouped or collected by the DMV and then comes back out. So we haven't seen the delay or the backlog when it comes to that. But those are not the material, I don't say they're not material, they're important. But about 84% of our C tax distribution is directly related to those items that we're still waiting on. So yes, it's across the entire state. Last week, we were notified that the intention was to get us our final distribution by this week, mid to late this week. But I'm not quite sure with the state shutdown and their issues right now, how that is going to work as far as what information they would have available. We'd be willing to take a check. They don't have to do like an electronic transfer. We'll take a check. I'll take it to the bank or work with Justin and we'll get that put in. But I don't know how that's going to work.
Sure. And could we go back to the slides? I think it was the second to that one. No, we'll go forward. It's the one with the scale on it. That one. I'm looking at that and I'm seeing expenses are outweighing income. And that's a real problem that we need to focus on. I mean, that's a cute little picture, but the reality is expenses are exceeding income. And it's something that we need to look at. It's, again, a nice graphic, but the real story is how do we write that? And again, going back to this, I took some notes down. So you said that the C taxes are up, but the distribution is slow. Is that?
Taxable sales are up.
Taxable sales. Taxable sales are up and the distribution is slow. So, I mean, if I was, if I was a candidate for running for governor, I might use that as a campaign speech, something to stump with about getting this straightened out with the state of Nevada. The state of Nevada needs to do a better job of doing what they're doing. I know as, as a department head in the past, where we had the Department of Taxation in on a regular basis auditing what we're doing. Somebody should be looking at what the state's doing and making sure that they're paying these, these monies out in a timely fashion for the city of Reno, the city of Spark, Fire District, all the counties. This is a real problem. We've got obligations that we need to take care of as well. So this is, this is a problem. And others might know how we can get that addressed to the powers that be down in Carson City and see if we can speed up the process. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your time and your work and service to Washoe County. And we'll just continue to work on building next year's budget together. Thank you. Okay, we are going into our last presentation, six C1, Mr. Solero.
All right. Item six C1 is the Director of the State Department of Agriculture, Mr. Goicaccia, here to discuss the Virginia Range Horses. Not to be held accountable for the Department of Taxation. Just want to throw that out there. We also have representatives from the city of Reno to discuss a little bit about a project that they are doing as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Goicaccia.
You're on. All right, thank you. And Director Goicaccia, for the record, Nevada Department of Agriculture, County Manager Solero, Chair Hill. Thank you very much for approving an agenda that puts a state agency immediately behind that presentation. We are from the state, but we are not here to help with C tax distribution. I spent three terms sitting where you are, so I can understand that. I appreciate that very much. I do have Deputy Director Doug Ferris here with me today. Thank you for accommodating us. We will be brief. I'm sure there may be some questions on this and definitely value your time here. We do have to get back and see if we can't relight some of our agency and get, moving forward with that. So real quick updates on Virginia Range feral and astray horses. What are the Virginia Range horses? So it's commonly referred to as VRE, Virginia Range Astray. And how we got there, in 1984, the BLM declared the Virginia Range wild horse free. So what's that mean? You've heard about the 1971 Wild, Free Roaming Wild Horse and Burrow Act. These horses do not fall underneath that. As actions taken in 1984 by the BLM, those horses were at that time deemed astray horses. There was a large ranching operation in that area for many years. And a lot of these horses are actually descendants that came from that ranching operation. So they are managed under NRS 569, which we have the sole authority in the state of Nevada, the Department of Ag does, to manage feral and astray livestock. And that is what these horses are. They've migrated there over time before fencing was completed in some areas. And they've also just reproduced from those original horses that were there from that ranching operation that were not claimed and those horses that were there in 1984. We also do know that horses are continuing to be turned out on that Virginia range, and they do fall under our jurisdiction. Now, I want to note that anywhere, we manage animals, livestock everywhere in the state of Nevada, all 17 counties. Astray animals everywhere else, we pick them up, we advertise them. Can we find the owner? If not, we sell them, we place them at that point. That's what we do. We are managing these differently. Number one, because of the number of them. And historically, that is what has been done. So where is the Virginia Range? The north boundary is Interstate 80 as it runs through the canyon. One of our favorite, I guess, transitory pathways, we will call it at this point. East boundary, Highway 95A along by Fernley. The south boundary is US 50 and the northern outskirts of Carson City to exclude those residential areas. West boundary, East Lake Boulevard, Old US 395 and Veterans Parkway. Now, East Lake Boulevard was always fenced off. And that Washoe Lake, the Scripps, those sensitive areas were fenced off. That fence is in disrepair. And we'll get into a little bit here in a minute of what Nevada is as a fenced out state. So as we started looking at this and we knew we were having public safety concerns, the one thing we knew we could not do was put that East Lake Boulevard fence back up. That was just going to provide a place for horses to congregate. And that is a very busy roadway, as you all know anymore. The last thing we can do is have horses standing on a fence with the traffic that is on that road. So how do we manage these horses? There is no general fund money for these horses. And we manage those from programs in the Division of Animal Industry. That includes brand recording fees, brand inspection fees, and astray livestock fees. So the livestock industry are what funds this program that we manage the VRE horses with. No other money that comes into that on a, for a day-to-day basis. We were fortunate enough to get some money a few years ago through USDA, AFIS, our partners there. We did get some earmark money out of Congress and we have spent that money. And most of that, 75%, was spent on public safety, fencing and continued investment on where we need to do additional fencing to protect the public safety. We monitor welfare, relocation and fertility control. And we have great cooperating partners that we have agreements with, and it is their responsibility. We work well with them. If we have horses on roadways where they don't belong, we have horses on properties where we don't, where they don't belong. We contact those entities and they can remove those horses and put them in a safe place. We do put a lot of horses, adopt them into homes through that as well. And then our fertility control is being done by another one of our cooperative partners, and that is across the range. And we do have another one of those agreements in place at this time. It will run through September and October of next year. So I talk about public safety and how that is bordered by four major highways, all kinds of residential areas. In '24 alone, we had 36 reported, and it's actually 37 now, reported vehicle collisions. We had to update that from going back through our data. In '23, we had 42 reported crashes. In '22, there were 24, and '21, there were 27. In 2020, we had 46 reported crashes. So when I first came to the agency, back to the agency as a director, we heard you and we heard the city of Reno loudly. We have public safety concerns. We actually received a letter from the Chief of Police of Reno that we can't do this. Our officers are responding. We're continuing to see these collisions and some of these are higher speed roads and they're in congested areas. So we took that very seriously. And that's when we started looking at, how can we make this separation between those congested areas and these horses to protect our motoring public, to protect our children in our parks and in our own backyards and front yards? And so that is why we went the direction that we did. I think it should be important to note, the census numbers in 1997, there were 413 horses on the range. In 2002, there are 1,274. 2008, 1,448. In '14, 1,959. In '18, 2,951. And in '22, 3,567. So we have a lot of horses. And that postage stamp that they are living on is shrinking with continued development. We know that it is. And again, we don't want to see any animals suffer. We don't want to see any animals that are impacted on our, in our highways. And more importantly, we want to protect our public. We do need to note, it is illegal to feed and water the horses. They are astray livestock. And the statutes are clear. We cannot take up livestock. We cannot feed and water the livestock that are out there. If you have them and they're there, give us a call. If you need us to remove them, we will work with our partners. We can do that if they're in an area that they do not belong or if they're causing concern for public safety. Nevada is a fenced out state. As I said, NRS 569, 431 is clear what a legal fence is, and it's up to that property owner to fence that out. You know, we hear a lot of talk, well, that's BLM out there. Again, there, that's a horse-free area. It's been deemed horse-free. The BLM doesn't have any horses out there. We are thankful. We have a good working relationship with the BLM. Should the Bureau of Land Management decide to trespass the state of Nevada for those horses that are out there? That happens everywhere else in the state. If there are astray and feral livestock that do not belong there, there's a trespass order and those animals are gathered. So thankfully, it has not come to that. But they do, they do not have a right under the 1971 Act to be there. So yes, we are in the process of repairing and constructing areas of fencing along the Virginia Range. We have, we started at Jumbo and worked our way north. Jumbo, as many of you know, I'm sure all of you know, in the Washoe Valley area, we worked our way north. The reason we did that, we have been working with the city of Reno. They had a fencing project. I know some of them are here. We'll let them speak here in just a second on what they are doing. We tied our fence in early this summer into where we agreed to, to await the terminus of their fence in that same area. So again, we can better secure South Reno and those areas that are very, very congested. So we want to thank them for their partnership in that. They have been great to work with. As we told them, this is where we're going. Where are you going? We've adjusted our lines to make sure that they do come out in that same place. We don't want to leave a funnel. We don't want to leave a gap. We don't want to leave corners where we can trap livestock. That's the other thing. You can, you can make a lot of crazy fences and a lot of corners and you end up with horses standing in corners where they shouldn't be. Livestock normally do not like fenced corners. So I'm almost out of time and I promised myself I'd be done. So we will stop here for questions. We just have a little flyer here that our group had put together, Heed the Herd. I'll let you read that for yourself. You guys can all read. You don't need me to read that to you. So if there are any questions, Deputy Director Ferris and I are happy to answer those. Or do we want to go on to, to the city of Reno? And then questions?
Well.
It's up to you, ma'am.
Well, Director Goicaccia, thank you so much for taking the time and being so patient for this item to come up. I'll have, open it up to the board to see if there are any questions. Right now, midway through, Commissioner Clark, you had asked for a presentation.
I just want to thank you for your presentation. It was enlightening exactly what's taking place. And I think if the public really understands what's taking place as far as what your responsibilities are, that what the state's responsibilities are, they'd have a different viewpoint on what's taking place. Also, I want to point out, item seven, E3, on our agenda today, I'm donating discretionary funds, $5,000 to the prison for training Mustangs. So I think, you know, fencing is one part of it. Birth control is another part of it. Adopting these animals out is another part of it. Let's, let's put all these pieces together and see if we can get this problem at least reduced. Because the population that you just read through and how, how it's growing, we could have 10,000 horses here in a couple of years if, if, you know, continues this way. So it's a big problem for a lot of things, for safety reasons, car crashes, cost to the municipalities for having emergency vehicles show up and just so many different levels. And there's got to be a better way to do this. And, and somebody said earlier that people are shooting them and that's not the answer. Rounding them up is maybe not the answer, but maybe birth control. Uh, rounding them up is maybe not the answer, but maybe, uh, birth control, adoption, fencing, water, whatever it takes to, to solve this problem. And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for, Commissioner Clark. And we are committed to continue to work through that with all our partners. And, and I, you know, should know that we're here with you guys today, but we also have conversations regularly with Lyon County. Uh, we have conversations with folks in Carson City. Uh, you're not alone in, in how we're doing, dealing with this. And we've had a lot of, uh, conversations with the city of Reno, too. So we will continue to work on this. That's one thing, I'm hard-headed, I don't give up.
Great. And Commissioner Andriela?
I, I don't really have any questions. I just want to say thank you, and I'd be remiss to not also thank you for bringing back the state fair for everyone's dates, June tenth through the fourteenth. If I got those dates correct, if I remember. But I do really want to thank you. Um, I know that you're doing a lot with pretty much nothing, right? In terms of no funding, and the livestock fees don't necessarily cover everything that you need. And I think it is a collective effort, and thanks to the city of Reno and to everyone who's doing what they can to, to resolve a, a big situation that's occurring. So thank you.
And I love the nay acronym. That's great there. So very clever, clever work. Um, and I, um, I want to get some of those flyers out to our communities, so that's really great.
We will, uh, have those sent over.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time, and we'll bring up the city of Reno to hear about the partnership.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Garth Oxliffe, J U B Engineers. We were, uh, hired by the city of Reno to help them out a number of years ago with the interaction of the wildlife, specifically wild horses, and the urban environment. So going back, like I mentioned, almost five years ago, we started having some preliminary conversations. And at that time, it was more of kind of, what can we do? What needs to be done? We recognized that through community growth, both with the city of Reno and Washoe County, that more developments were coming. And some of those developments, namely in the South Meadows area off of Rio Wrangler Parkway, were potentially going to limit access to water, um, to the horses along Steamboat Creek. So one of the first things we did was took a look at, oh, yes, is it the next one, Dave? Thank you. So one of the first things we did is we took a look at, um, how can we maintain access for the public while also keeping horses away from the urban area? Uh, one of the things we greatly wanted to do, and, and Commissioner, or the Nevada Department of Ag mentioned, was to kind of reduce that dependence on human compliance. Not only legally, where they're out there watering and feeding them, but also just how can we keep the, the horses in their more natural habitat? So we took a look at where we had gaps, if you will. Um, where can we do implementation of wild horse fence? We started off with two phases. So what I was mentioning there with the water, uh, if you can see the red line kind of in the middle of the image there, just south or the bottom of where that red line ends is where some new development is being built. Uh, so we recognized that that was going to be closing off access to water. So what we did there, um, on the north end of the project is we opened up approximately three thousand linear feet of creek, uh, Steamboat Creek there, that water, that horses can now have access to the water. If you're driving on Veterans Parkway there and you go up and over the little bridge over Alexander Lake Road, and you look off to the east, you'll see them, they're almost all the time during the day. Um, so that was an opening that we created as part of this project. The fence line continuing on up north to Miraloma was in very poor condition. Um, in my time as the project manager for the Southeast Connector, I walked that entire fence line and knew that that fence was in bad condition, and Reno recognized that. So we removed and replaced all of that fence in that location. As we move further south, and we get into where the developers are, it doesn't show up very well in this image, but there's a little red dot kind of in the upper-right corner, if you will, of this image. That was a location between two, uh, developments that was happening, it was a drainage ditch. And that was acting as a funnel, the horses were just coming right down to Rio Wrangler Parkway and getting hit on, um, Set, Steamboat Parkway. So we closed that off, or we're in the process of closing that off here in the next couple of weeks. And then as we move further south there, that is around that aggregate pit that you see down there in southeast Reno. Um, again, fence was in various stages of repair. We worked with the property owners there, came up with a solution that was good for all parties involved, fenced around the backside of that aggregate pit, and came back down around and tied into some of that existing Toll Brothers fencing that has been recently built, and they were conditioned to put in as part of their process with the city of Reno. As we move further south, and we get into the Virginia Highlands, this is the area we're currently working on right now. And the green line that you see there is what Nevada Department of Ag put in, in our meetings with them, of, of tying together, where the purple and green meet on the right-hand side is where we had the conversation that this is our common spot to where we can meet up in partnership. Um, so we're working our way through there with Geiger Grade. Uh, we also did an agreement with Nevada Department of Transportation to install a cattle guard on Geiger Grade in a location that made sense from a public safety standpoint. That was a big issue of a concern in there, as far as we needed a straight enough section of road for cattle guard. We didn't want to have interactions with motorcycles and issues on cattle guards there, especially as we enter the street vibration time of year. We know we get a lot of motorcyclists on Geiger Grade. So that's why the fence, as, as Commissioner Go, Gocicchia mentioned, or Director Gocicchia, excuse me, um, the kind of, you know, corners we put in there, that was just a lot of negotiations with different property owners, different concerns, different, uh, future plans they had there. We unfortunately couldn't do a straight line. Uh, we did have some property owners that were just unwilling to put a fence on their property. Understandably, they liked the open space. So that is the alignment we ended up with on there. When all this is complete, the overall goal of eliminating opportunities for wild horses, namely, any wildlife really, to get into the urban environment, we hope that this has really rectified that issue, and we won't have the issues of the number of strikes that were mentioned there on the case, in the one year, almost one a week, uh, when you looked at those numbers and averaged them out. So, uh, at that point, I was asked to be brief with this. We have a lot more pictures and other things to discuss with this project, but at that point, I'll conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions. And we also have city of Reno here as well, if there's anything that's above my head.
Great. Wow, the city of Reno has been doing a lot of great work. Uh, Commissioner Clark, do you have anything?
No, thank you for your report. It's a very informative, thank you.
And Commissioner Andriela, Commissioner Garcia, uh, well, thank you so much. Um, I know that this is a major concern for constituents in Commissioner Clark's district, so hopefully this information was enlightening. And we'll continue to, uh, try to work with the city of Reno and the Department of Ag and see how we can, uh, you know, best collaborate and ensure that, uh, we're keeping people safe and also not harming our wildlife. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move into our consent items. And, um, Commissioner Garcia, I was hoping you could point out, um, if you're also comfortable making a motion on consent, um, the donation we also have in consent.
Yes, Madam Chair. So the donation item is, uh, seven B one. It's a recommendation to approve a cash donation from several sources, uh, of fifty-six hundred and eighty-one dollars for the regional parks and open space programs and facilities. And, uh, with that, I approve the rest of consent.
Thank you. And I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriela. And Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on consent?
There is nobody signed in.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do any board members have anything that they want to pull or questions on consent? I'm not seeing anything. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And our vice chair is not here, so I will take a stab at the block vote, and, um, hopefully I can get a second. Um, I am going to propose that we block eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. And, um, looking for a second on the block.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriela. And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on those items?
We have Penny Brock signed in for item eighteen, or item eight, sorry.
Penny Brock. So we just heard the state of Washoe County finances. You're in the red, it looks like. So on item eight, the CARES campus, um, is asking for almost six hundred thousand dollars a year. They sent out a contract to clean. Did they do three R F Ps? Plus, they're going to get an automatic, uh, that's a three-year agreement. Then they'll get an automatic one, two, one-year renewals. Plus, in addition to this, almost six hundred thousand a year, they can get cost for callbacks. So we, the taxpayers, don't really know how much is being, being spent to clean the CARES campus. We don't know, we're not getting a staff report evidently. We don't know how many square feet are being cleaned by the CARES campus. Does this include the Safe Camp? What does it include? We don't know. So in light of the budget problem, perhaps, um, this is an agenda. They're already getting eighty-eight million dollars a year for the homeless. Is this included in the eighty-eight million dollars? Or is it over and above the eighty-eight million for the homeless? So as usual, we, the taxpayers, have got a lot of question about the homeless and the CARES campus. I would ask you that you would table this to get additional information. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have nobody else signed in.
Okay, we have a motion on block and a second. Any questions from the board on that? Seeing none. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen.
Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, I, I did sign in, and, and, uh, I was right at the end. So, so I apolog, apologize, and maybe the chair didn't see that, but.
I apologize.
To the last public speaker's comments, I'm looking at that, uh, number eight as well. And, uh, you know, I wish that we had a, a, a little bit more time to work with that. Uh, you know, ideally, if I had a magic wand, I would take that in-house, have the county manage that, and find some folks that live at the CARES campus and see if anybody wanted to be hired there and, A, make some money, and B, save us some money. So I, I think there's, uh, other ways to do this rather than just awarding this massive contract to, to clean that. I think there's some able-bodied folks there who might like a job. And I think we should be looking at exploring other opportunities versus just hiring outside contractors. Sometimes outside contractors make sense, and other times, they may not make sense. We've got six or seven, eight hundred people living at the CARES campus. There's got to be thirty or forty of them that's able-bodied who want to, who would like to get a job. So, uh, I, I, I would like to see eight pulled from this. I'm not going to support this at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. We have a motion and a second. Um, would you like to hear a little bit of background on this from the staff?
Sure, sure, why not?
Because I think that we do have someone in the audience.
But my point is still going to stay, stay the same. Lots of able-bodied folks there who might actually want to make some money versus sitting around, uh, doing whatever they do during the day. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. For the record, Aaron Smith, C S D Operations. Uh, so this is a, uh, award of custodial contract. Uh, we're handling it as a high-security contract, uh, as we do at other facilities. Uh, currently, the, uh, contract is awarded to vendor. Uh, we don't have those resources in-house to, uh, do them within facilities. But we'd have to talk to operations in order to accommodate any use of our, uh, either attendees or the, the people at the, the campuses. Uh, to clarify this, this award is going to be for our place as well as CARES campus.
Thank you. And, um, I, I think Commissioner Clark brings up an interesting idea. I'm sure it requires equipment and probably some legal liability. But, I mean, I think it could be potentially something we look at in the future. Um, and, um, so, uh, Commissioner Clark, did you want to add anything?
Well, yeah, uh, you know, I, it's, it's almost answers its own question. We talk about, um, you need high-security cleaning, but these folks are living in this high-security, uh, situation. So aren't they cleared to be there just by virtue of their residency there? Do you see where I'm going with this? So you, you, we've got high-security people to clean this particular environment, but I'm, I'm suggesting the folks who already live there should be considered to be hired. And we've got other county staff or Volunteers of America, whoever else we're contracting with, they're allowed to be on-site. This isn't just picking people off the street. We, I'm suggesting we hire folks who actually live there and put them to work. And, uh, and also, we've got other, other employees there that could probably supervise this. To the Commissioner, Chair's point, we might have to, you know, buy some extra brooms or buffing machines or trash cans or, say, janitorial supplies, but that's, that's very small amount compared to this. So again, uh, I can't support the whole package. I'll support the other items. And I know the first and the, the motion's been made and it's been seconded, but, uh, I'm just opposed to this. Can we get a month-to-month contract with this firm to continue doing what they're doing until we can explore other opportunities and other avenues to do this? That's the question I'm throwing out. Thank you.
Through the chair to answer the question. Uh, so this, the, the current vendor is, uh, who's, uh, recommended for award is the, the vendor that's currently doing this. Uh, we can explore a month-to-month. Um, ideally, we would, uh, execute an award bid, uh, for cost savings, uh, and to hold the vendor accountable. Uh, but we can explore that.
And, and it says, you know, we've only had one responsive bidder. I mean, uh, this is an opportunity for the county to take this in-house, give some job training, gives, put some money in some people's pockets, and maybe save a couple of bucks. But, you know, somebody could, could get on the payroll and, and decide they actually like to work and, and would maybe, uh, uh, go on and become, uh, successful in an outside situation. But giving people an opportunity to work. I guarantee there's a, the small percentage of folks that, that may not want to be involved in this at all, but they're probably a percentage of the folks that live there who would welcome an opportunity to, to work in the place where they live. So that's what I'm suggesting. Thank you.
Well, uh, thank you for the background information and your work on this. Um, you know, per our rules, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Let's see if we can move forward with this. If we can, we'll have a discussion on that. Um, but, uh, then, then we'll go from there. And I think, Commissioner Clark, um, this is something that, um, I'm sure the, the team at, um, Homeless Services would be happy to sit down and chat with you about. I just toured the CARES campus with, um, the city of, uh, of Salt Lake City, no, the city of South Salt Lake City, uh, yesterday, and, um, we still have a significant portion of the people who live there that are disabled, um, and seniors. But, uh, certainly an interesting concept. So we have a motion and a second, um, on the block. Um, uh, any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. And...
The motion passed three to one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that. Okay. Um, we are now going to move, and so just to keep, uh, folks, um, uh, to, to help folks understand the agenda, we're going to go into item eleven, and then we'll take a brief, uh, lunch break and come back for our public hearing that I know a lot of folks are in the audience or waiting online to hear. Uh, so, um, Mr. Slariff, you can help us with item eleven.
Sure. Item number eleven is a recommendation to approve the appointment of one candidate to fill a partial term beginning on the date of appointment and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, for the Washoe County Open Space and Regional Parks Commission. Uh, and Ms. Wilson is here to walk you through this item.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Chair Hill. Um, this item is for a partial appointment for the Parks Commission. You have twenty-five candidates in front of you, um, of which you'll select your top three. And then from there, if we have a clear winner, we will vote on that. However, we can go into subsequent voting if needed.
Thank you so much. Oh, of course, we can do public comment. Yes, absolutely, of course. And, um, uh, Madam Clerk, if you can help us with some public comment.
Uh, first up, we have George Jostelin, followed by Austin Lorenz.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, originally, I had good morning, but, um, it's a little longer than I had expected. My name is George Jostlin. I want to thank you for allowing me to stand before you and share my interest in filling the open position for the Regional Parks and Open Space Board. I have had the great pleasure of living here since January of two thousand and seven, when I accepted a promotion to become the Regional Director of Government Affairs and Public Relations for Charter Communications. Don't hold that against me. Reporting directly to Manny Martinez with a dotted line to your former colleague, Marcia Burke-Biggerly. Please don't hold that against me also. I am an avid sportsman. I've played baseball, bowling, hockey, uh, running, and of course, golf throughout my life. I grew up in upstate New York, went to college in Syracuse, but prior to moving to Washoe- County, I had the pleasure of living in Southern California for over twenty years. Having lived here for the past eighteen years, I've come to love Northern Nevada. The Giants, Kippen Crook, Hall of Famer John Miller, our beloved Aces, and of course, the silver and blue. Additionally, I'm a proud Silver Circle member for our beloved PBS Reno, although I still call it KNPB, and count station manager Kurt Meschey as one of my good friends. With regards to my role on the board, I believe it is important to protect the open beauty we call Northern Nevada. However, while understanding the need to support growth, I believe we need to do it in a controlled manner so that we don't lose the beauty of our area and why we all live here. Keeping our current and future facilities state-of-the-art will also help with that growth. Having recently retired, I now have the time and felt the urge to serve my county and my neighbors, which is why I have placed my name into consideration, and I stand here before you today. I thank you for your time, and rarely am I under the time I'm allotted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Austin Lorenz, followed by Jennifer Uvira.
Thank you, commissioners. It's great to be here today and to be considered for the Open Space and Regional Parks Commission. It's an honor to be among some great candidates. I wanted to share a little bit about myself and why I wanna join the board and what I can bring to it. I remember when I first decided to move to Washoe County, I was hiking down at Mammoth Lakes and I met a doctor there. And we were talking about recreation, and he told me about how Washoe County was a secret gem that had almost every recreation opportunity that you could imagine nearly year-round. And from then on, I knew that I wanted to move here. When the time came, my wife was looking for PhD programs, and she chose UNR. And when she graduated, we decided to stay here and raise our family here because of the outdoor recreation opportunities. Professionally, I'm a scientist. I specialize in spatial analysis and have worked for the last eight years as civil servant with the USGS. Over, my work focuses on wildlife conservation, improving hunting and recreation on wildlife refuges and other public lands. And in that role, I've discovered a passion for bringing diverse groups together to seek common sense solutions. I've worked with everyone from private landowners, NGOs, state, federal governments, and international governments. Science has taught me to see data as an opportunity, and through that lens, I see many opportunities to bring new voices, people, and funding to our parks and open spaces. In preparing for this meeting, I've found some wonderful examples across our country to keep recreation high and improve revenues for our parks and open spaces. It has been an honor to serve, it would be an honor to serve on this committee and share my expertise as an outdoor enthusiast, parent, and a scientist, and to support all the people of Washoe County and enjoy our parks and open spaces. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Uvira, followed by Matthew De Martini.
Hello. Good morning, Chair Hill and commissioners. My name is Jennifer Uvira, and I am applying for the open seat on the Washoe County Open Spaces and Regional Parks Commission. I am honored to have the opportunity to share a little bit about myself and why I am seeking to serve on this board. Though my background is in environmental engineering, I made a career transition to start running Clean Up the Lake, a Lake Tahoe-based nonprofit that scuba dives to collect submerged litter. In other words, I am now a glorified underwater trash collector. In this role, I utilize my skills in project management, community engagement, and technical problem-solving. My work has involved coordinating large teams of volunteers, fostering partnerships with local governments and businesses, and ensuring projects are carried through from planning to completion. These experiences have strengthened my ability to balance long-term vision with day-to-day details, skills I believe would directly benefit this commission's work. I know this commission is already tackling important initiatives, including the Truckee Meadows Trail Plan, the Open Space and Natural Resources Management Plan, and the Park District Exploration. This one especially resonates with me because I've seen how long-term planning and dedicated funding can make or break a community's ability to care for its natural spaces. If structured well, a parks district could provide sustainable support for trails, facilities, and conservation while giving residents a stronger voice in how their resources are managed. Sorry. If elected, one area I would like to focus on is expanding youth engagement in our parks. Education is the only way to create real lasting change. When young people are given the tools and opportunities to connect with nature, they don't just participate in programs. They develop a sense of ownership and responsibility to those open spaces. I have firsthand, I've seen this firsthand in Tahoe, how students and young volunteers light up when they get the opportunity to dive, to hike, to take part in hands-on stewardship. By fostering these relationships early, we can inspire lifelong stewards and ensure that the values of conservation and community carry forward for future generations to come. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Chair Hill and commissioners, for your leadership and for encouraging my perspective. I would be grateful for the opportunity to bring my background, energy, and commitment to this board in the service of Washoe County's open spaces and parks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and commissioners. I'm one of the applicants for the Washoe County Open Space and Regional Parks Commission. My name is Matthew De Martini. Just a brief background, I've been a Washoe County resident for forty, over forty years, all my life. I currently live in District Three. I work for a local engineering company here in town. On my free time, I'm a runner, and so I'm out there, you know, running forty miles a week in the community, spend a lot of time in the open space and parks and so forth. But I also realize that, you know, the parks and are not, and open spaces that we have here in this community are not just the trails, but there are also some great historical and cultural resources that they provide. And I think I align kind of with the mission of the Parks Commission in, you know, preserving and making those resources available to all community members and some of the just great resources that we have. I recently did, in the 2024 cycle, ran for the City of Reno City Council. So as part of that, I got to get out in the community and really talk with, you know, thousands of members of the community or interact with and see, kind of, and realize just how important our parks and open spaces are to members of the community and access to those. So I think I'd be a good fit for the commission, and thank you for the time. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have nobody else signed in. Do have emails to be placed on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so we are being asked to choose our top three, and what a difficult decision this is going to be for this board. I mean, it's such a bummer. We have amazing people applying for this, so thank you.
Do have a question, Commissioner Andrea. The staff report didn't list what districts are in the existing appointees, and I'm wondering if there's any districts that aren't being represented. I couldn't find that.
Ms. Wilson, not to put you on the spot, I don't know if you know that information.
No worries. Alexandra Wilson, for the record. I don't have that information readily available in front of me at the moment. However, for the Washoe County Open Space and Regional Parks, it is not district-specific, although in speaking with our director for our Community Services Department, they do try to get a good mix of the districts. So while you're voting, I can pull those and I can send those to you guys.
Thank you. And maybe just for the future, we have that listed, just so if that's something weighing on, you know, commissioners' minds when looking at these applicants, go ahead.
I appreciate that. I do know, just in looking at this before, that Mark Newman, who's vacating the seat, was in District Three, I believe, Commissioner Garcia. So I do think that District Three does not have representation, and that is an unofficial analysis.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Any other commissioner comments before we get this ballot in? Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Okay, for round one. Commissioner Garcia voted for Austin Lorenz, Jennifer Uvira, and Sophia Heidrick. Chair Hill voted for Austin Lorenz, Jennifer Uvira, and Bo Walker. Commissioner Andrea voted for Matthew De Martini, Bo Walker, and John Henderson. And Commissioner Clark voted for Jennifer Uvira, John Henderson, and George Jostelin.
Okay. I see three votes for Jennifer Uvira. Am I correct, Madam Clerk? Okay. If the board is ready, I'm looking for a motion on Ms. Uvira.
Madam Chair, I move to approve.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Garcia, and I'll second that. Any questions or comments on the motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Uvira. And honestly, what an incredible group of candidates. Please continue to apply for opportunities at Washoe County. We really are so lucky to have such talented people in our community, and there are many boards and cabs, citizen advisory boards, just please stay involved, as well as our Leadership Academy. So what we are going to do is take a, I'm gonna give us a half-hour break. We will come back at 1:15, and we'll go, we'll do our public hearing, item sixteen. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you in a few.
Good afternoon. I will call this Board Accounting Commissioners Meeting to order. It is 1:18. We are now moving forward with our public hearing. And if Madam Clerk could help us with this, and I don't know if you have to read every single piece on this long agenda item. Here you go.
This is the second reading. This will be ordinance number 1743. Amends Washoe County Code Chapter 110 Development Code to update Article 220 Tahoe area and Article 220.1 Tahoe Area Design Standards. This was formerly Bill Number 1934.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And if we could have a brief staff report on this item, welcome Ms. Oakley.
Ms. Oakley, Washoe County Planning. I have a brief version of this, if you would like that, and then if there are any questions, of course, I can go into more detail on any topic.
That sounds great. Thank you.
So this is the 2025 Tahoe Area Plan Update. And it does contain two different items, application types that you will be considering action on today. So first is that second reading and potential adoption of a Development Code Amendment. That is the most substantial part of this area plan update. But there's also an associated master plan amendment that's making text changes to the Tahoe Area Plan, which is the master plan for Washoe, Tahoe. That NPA and the Development Code Amendment both have been approved by the Planning Commission, which is why they have come over across to your guys' desk. So to provide some highlights of what's included, one of the most significant elements of this update is the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, or TRPA, Phase II Housing Amendments. And what those are, are incentives for affordable, moderate, and attainable housing targeted at town centers, which is basically your downtown kind of Incline Village area, and then also similarly in Crystal Bay, and then also areas zoned for multifamily. These amendments were adopted by TRPA in 2023. And when they adopted them, they adopted them as a mandate to the local jurisdictions. So what they said at that time is, you know, we've adopted these incentives, local jurisdictions, by at the end of next year, either adopt them as we've written them, the incentives that we've created, or you can propose an alternative that you can demonstrate has an equal or greater effect on essentially decreasing the cost of building de-restricted housing. And so this is a piece, but not all of this area plan update. We did quite a bit of public outreach, and this is the topic we heard the most about. And so we did explore an alternative with TRPA to, an alternative to these Phase II amendments. Ultimately, we received feedback that that alternative would not be accepted because it didn't demonstrate that kind of really financial standard of lowering the cost of affordable housing. And so those amendments essentially as written are what is included in this package. Now, I do want to just highlight that we did, to the extent that we could, add some things into our code package to address the concerns that we did here, again, to the extent that we could. And so the big thing to mention in that realm is creating a process and standards for review of a parking analysis to request a parking reduction, and making it very clear that we, Washoe County, have the authority to approve or not approve that request. And so that's something important that we added as part of the overall package. And there are other Development Code amendments included in this package. There are some cleanups that, or improvements that we've identified since the adoption of the Tahoe Area Plan in 2021 that we want to take this opportunity to make, and also a proposed change to expand allowances for accessory dwelling units. So those are kind of the highlights of what is included. I do want to just address as well that the Phase II amendments and all the amendments in this package, they don't impact TRPA's growth management system. And that is their system of development rights that requires that basically anybody constructing any sort of housing unit or other type of construction has a development right to build that unit. And there is a limited number of those. And that number, the number of total units that can be built in the Tahoe Basin, it's not changing. The intent of these incentives is to direct that development to the extent possible to be de-restricted and to address the affordable housing issue in the basin. And so that is something that is not changing with these amendments. And I do also just want to mention that this is one of those prioritized items that the Board kind of listed for us to get to work on. So this is one of those items, and it's before you today for a decision. So those are kind of the highlights we can talk about. The last thing I'll mention is, since it is a mandate from TRPA, they've kind of said, you know, you can adopt these, and if you don't do so by a certain date, we, TRPA, have the power to adopt them for you. We are past that date. They've been working with us because we have been working towards adopting these Phase II Housing Amendments. But I do want to mention that if we don't or are not making progress in that direction, they do have the authority to adopt them for us at that regional level. So it's something to keep in mind. And that's the short of it. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Oakley. And I wanted to commend you because we received a lot of public comment, giving you accolades for listening to the community and trying to incorporate community concerns as part of this package. And I still think that parking allowance and, you know, ensuring that Washoe County has the final sign-off is a win as well. So I just wanted to say thank you for really digging in and doing so much work on this project. I will start with Commissioner Garcia, see if you have any questions, okay? Commissioner Andriola and Commissioner Clark. Okay. Thank you for that. And now, Madam Clerk, I'd love to hear from our public commentators.
First up, we have Jack Dalton, followed by Stephen Dolan.
I'm Jack Dalton, Incline resident for 10 years, 11 years, and this has been a long morning. And the part that I am opposed to in a strong way that has to do with Incline vis-à-vis the vertical sprawl, and vis-à-vis the evacuation, and vis-à-vis the affordable housing, which doesn't exist in this. So let's first start about affordable housing. I have a house, big house. I don't need that. I can get put up an ADU. Well, I can live in the ADU, and I'll live it there, but then I can make an STR of my house. It's done, but that's going to be permitted. I want an ADU that is STR. Prohibit STRs, and that's not what you're doing. The place is already overpacked. You should take a look at the summer. There was, what happens in the summer of the population. And none of the evacuations have talked yet about the summer population, which is huge. So how are we going to get out? We're not going to get out. This is a very challenged area as far as evacuation. You're not going to be able to do it. The town is already packed. You've got to go through. And you should see in the summer. Go to Crystal Bay. You can't get out. It's a half hour to get out of Crystal Bay on a summer. There was a very nice opinion article in Reno Gazette. It was by Pamela, I'm sorry, but I know she's here, but I pronounce it wrong. So I, but at any rate, how many people come here each year? 15 million vehicle traffic. 75% are out of the basin. So that's not going to be. Now, let's talk about, let's talk about people that live there. The homeowner's insurance on one of the condominiums has increased $8,000 in the last three years. So there's people moving out because of that. This isn't going to address any of that kind of stuff. Now, let's talk about the fire. Well, we don't have, the U.S. Forest Service five days ago said there was 350 lightning strikes, eight fires. And the last fire that we had over here came pretty close to going over the mountain. If it goes over the mountain, we're gone. So I'm opposing any of the stuff that has to do currently with Incline and Crystal Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Dolan, followed by Roxanna Dunn.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill, Chair, and other commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity. I'll pick up kind of where I left off this morning. I'll remind the group that according to the insurance industry analysis of the fire in Oakland, that it was caused and created by high-density housing on narrow hillside streets. And that is a definition of Incline Village and Crystal Bay and most of the communities around the lake, for that matter. TRPA is big in this. And as an alternate on the Board of Governors and as a member of the Board of Governors for the TRPA, I'm sure you understand these terms better than most, but they are manipulative terms. The first one that's the toughest is continuity. That's one that usually starts in California and works its way around until our ADUs are changed in Nevada. Workforce housing, real great buzzword, really doesn't get applied to in an appropriate way within these rules that you're being asked to authorize change for. The others, and the most absurdly defined, is achievable housing. This is not low-income housing. You guys have heard all the chatter about what it really is on the boards for the TRPA. You know what it is, and how it really doesn't approach anywhere near taking care of housing for people who earn very little money. So it really is, the changes you're making are actually going to kill the business down here in Reno and Sparks and Verde and these areas. here in Reno and Sparks and Verde and these areas because it's really setting up to increase and monetize North Lake Tahoe. And so, there you're going to have all of the gambling money, all of these things going up there as opposed to your own districts. So, I think that should be a concern for you guys as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roxanna Dunn, followed by Christina Hill.
Ten-year resident of Incline Village and Chair of the Incline Village Cab. I've spoken with each of you about our evacuation dangers, so you already know that I agree with some of the speakers this morning, that that's a factor. But I want to make a different point today, and that is that these amendments, as structured, are not going to provide the kind of housing that our workers need. 10 years ago, when I bought my house in Incline, I was about $1 million short of being able to buy a house that has a view of the lake. But in these 65-foot-high buildings allowed by these amendments, I'm pretty sure that the fifth and sixth stories are going to have pretty nice views of the lake. And we're going to put workforce housing there? I don't think so. Every one of those units is going to be developed under the achievable category that has no limit on price for the seller, no limit on income for the buyer, no limit on the size of the unit. Our workforce doesn't need multimillion-dollar condos with a view. They mostly need rental apartments. Look at our workers. We have a lot of seasonal workers because of the nature of the area. We seem to attract a lot of people in their 20s who are spending their last carefree years in a fun place. On Saturday, I was talking with a guy who's a slope groomer at Diamond Peak, and he said, "I really shouldn't sign your petition because I'm about to move out of the area." Turns out, he and several of his buddies are moving to Scottsdale because they can no longer afford to live in Incline. We have many foreign workers who are here on temporary work visas. And then, we have our more permanent workers but who work in lower-level jobs that will never allow them to purchase a home, but they would like to live where they work. Now, we do have an example of something that works, and that is the Sugar Pine Housing Complex down in South Lake that was developed under the auspices of the St. Joseph Community Land Trust. I'm a fan of Land Trust. I think this is the only thing that's really going to work in our area, and I'm disappointed that TRPA went with these amendments instead of pursuing that approach. We want workforce housing, but I don't see any way that these amendments are going to result in anything other than high-priced condominiums for purchase by people who do not work in the area and probably, or may not need assistance. So, please vote no. I have 11 seconds left, and I would like to use that to commend the folks that we have worked with in the Planning Department. Dave, Kat, Courtney, Trevor, and Eric have all been wonderful, so thanks to them.
Thank you. Christina Hill, followed by Alexander Sigdenis.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Christina Hill. I've spent over four decades in Lake Tahoe environmental planning as a TRPA planner, Chair of the Washoe County Board of Adjustments, and consultant. I am here today because I believe these proposed amendments for the Tahoe area plan pose a serious threat to the integrity of our region. The amendments contain misleading housing labels. The amendments promote workforce and achievable housing, but in reality, they enable market-rate condos. There is no enforceable mechanism to ensure income-based occupancy of these units. Achievable housing, which is considered workforce housing, is, concludes multimillion-dollar units, hardly affordable. If you want affordable housing, you should limit STRs in Washoe County, which is only in the Crystal Bay-Incline Village area, to allow for more workforce housing. The amendments create negative environmental impacts. 100% land coverage is proposed with no clear plan for storm water treatment. Runoff from impervious surfaces is a major contributor to lake degradation. The only environmental analysis that was done for this plan to amend these code was done in 1987. That was 38 years ago. The world has changed substantially since then, and I can't believe you're using 38-year-old data to say, "Oh, the roads will be great, the population will be great, everything will be fine." The Lake Tahoe Basin has changed. Since the pandemic, working from home and agency supports more attractions to accommodate more tourists, visitors, such as the East Shore Trail. People come from all over the world to go on that trail. And, you know, it's just sad. The amendments will create further water quality decline. Nearshore water quality is deteriorating. Harmful algae blooms and microplastics are increasing. Trash accumulation and wildfire evacuations are worsening. The lake's ecological capacity has been exceeded, as confirmed by the State of the Lake report. TRPA has shifted their mission. It's moved from an Environmental Protection Agency to development promotion. Scientists have been replaced with PR professionals. They have encouraged incentives for developers over lake preservation.
Thank you. Alexander Sigdenis, followed by Ann Nichols.
I'm Alex Sigdenis, a Washoe-Tahoe constituent. These amendments are meant to solve a lack of workforce housing by dramatically rezoning Tahoe Town Center areas from a low-rise rural Main Street model to a vertical urban walkable city model. Two major issues for your consideration. First, the Tahoe Basin and Washoe-Tahoe do not have a dire shortage of housing units. We do have a shortage of housing units available to residents who seek to live and work here. Anybody, anywhere, planning a Tahoe vacation can choose from more than 5,000 licensed short-term rental listings in the basin, between 800 and 1,000 in Washoe-Tahoe, and many more that are unlicensed. Adding STR limits would improve housing availability without moving dirt, providing tax incentives or subsidies, or requiring costly changes to infrastructure. Ironically, county taxpayers now subsidize the administration of Washoe's STR program from its general fund, doesn't even pay for itself. Note that annual Tahoe visitation has soared by some tenfold from 2 to 20 million over the past 20 years. It's now two times that of the nation's most visited national park. More transient occupancy tax from STRs only goes to promoting more tourism, not to workforce housing or improving the infrastructure it runs down. These are reasons why communities nationwide have kept or restricted STRs, including in Airbnb's corporate home of San Francisco, where only permanent residents are allowed to be STR hosts. Second, this proposed high-density housing requires no parking. It assumes new residents with ill-defined achievable incomes will not have vehicles. Yet, these residents are likely to work in landscaping, construction, or service jobs for which a pickup truck or a car itself is a tool of their trade necessary to get to changing work sites. Or they're likely to be dual-income couples who work in different places. Next, in Washoe-Tahoe, snow drops by the foot in the winter. The county struggles to keep our roads clear, let alone our sidewalks and pathways where they even exist. It's not walkable for half the year when most street parking is illegal. Finally, how would non-vehicle-owning Town Center residents be evacuated in the likely event of a summer wildfire? So, here's why you should vote no to these zoning amendments. They will level our existing Town Centers and price out current businesses, enable a taxpayer-subsidized short-term rental program that could continue to remove long-term housing units from our communities, create new and costly taxpayer-funded issues around parking, infrastructure, snow removal, et cetera, exacerbate wildfire evacuation and basin overcapacity issues. And eventually, they'll most likely end up being just more vacation rental apartments, which nobody asked for. Vote no on this poor public policy, as would your Washoe-Tahoe constituents if this were a public referendum. We can do much better.
Thank you. Ann Nichols, followed by Pamela Mahoney-Sigdenis.
Good afternoon, Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance, Washoe County property owner, lived here 54 years. We strongly oppose these amendments. You know, they don't, it's just, it's unlawful. In short, you know, it fuels growth without true affordability, without wildfire and evacuation planning, and with the, without the environmental review required by law. A thorough analysis has to be done. This is, this is the rezoning of the entire Lake Tahoe Basin, piecemealed through each county. It's huge. And, you know, you're all pointing at each other, "Oh, TRPA made me do this," or, you know, "We didn't save enough money for the developers." This group think from TRPA that's being forced down your throats started in 2012, and it was this great idea about, "We'll go higher, like they do in Portland. It's not the same at Lake Tahoe." But TRPA, and you guys are treating the whole basin the same. 65 feet in height, 100% coverage, unlimited density, and no minimum parking. This is hubris. It's just, I can't believe that this is happening. And it's been piecemealed out. "Oh, this public outreach." Well, you had this meeting at the Parasol Building. Phase Three, by the way, is going to increase all the bonus units. It's going to increase the, that's what they're pushing. Don't you want to see more available housing? Don't we have to fix this? Let's increase our minimums, the cap on development. Let's increase it. That's what they're doing right now. But they piecemeal it. They push through one, phase two, now phase three, and each one is worse than the other. And you're just being dragged into this, and it's, I don't think it's defensible. You have new information that's not being analyzed from Tahoe Clean Air has done this analysis, fire evacuation analysis. It's going to take six hours to evacuate Incline Village. There's, nobody knows how long it'll take the whole lake to evacuate, you know? But go ahead, push this through, rush it through, no discussion. It's shameful, really. I can't believe this is happening. And I appreciate Commissioner Clark and Herman's, you know, I loved it. He goes, "If Lake Tahoe was a building, it would be unsafe and it would be out." Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Mahoney-Sigdenis, followed by Penny Brock.
Good afternoon. As you know, I'm Pamela Mahoney-Sigdenis. I'm a full-time Washoe-Tahoe resident. This is my first time in chambers. I would have normally taken the time to go to Incline Village, but this is the library. But this is so important, I wanted to be here in person. Your vote today will be one of the most consequential in Tahoe's history. I'm here to ask you to oppose the amendments. Development code, this far-reaching engrave, should be backed by significant environmental analysis, comprehensive traffic research, visitation data, and evacuation impacts. We have none of that information. You have the power to request it. From the beginning of this rezoning process, the public has consistently voiced serious concerns about the clear and present danger that extensive development in a geographically constrained basin will pose to Tahoe residents, visitors, and workers, not to mention the lake itself. These amendments are a naked attempt to serve growth-at-all-cost developer agendas. They will also endanger the public, residents, workers, and visitors alike. We're all going to be competing to get out. As one of my fellow Tahoe residents wrote to you, "History has shown us time and again that when officials ignore risks, disaster follows, and so does regret. We cannot afford to wait until after a tragedy to act. Our country, our county, and you, our leaders, must proactively address fire and evacuation concerns before approving such major development changes. You have the tools and you have the authority. What remains is the will to act responsibly. We ask and please encourage you to require comprehensive evacuation modeling. Require a comprehensive environmental impact study that analyzes the risks and harms to Lake Tahoe. Explore changes to the short-term rental ordinance to unlock existing housing. Approving these amendments today without the necessary knowledge of the impacts they will have will jeopardize the safety of every person who lives, works, and visits. Be an advocate for public safety. Please be an advocate for the lake's clarity and health. Oppose these amendments before you today. Thank you very much for your time."
Thank you. Penny Brock, followed by Jim McNamara.
Penny Brock, a resident down in the valley here. So, why do I care about this? Because our county commission is responsible to protect Lake Tahoe, the gem of the Sierra Nevadas, Incline Village, where people from around the world dream of vacationing. We need to protect the lake. We need to protect Incline Village. There's a word called moratorium, and when you have limited land, that word needs to be implemented to maintain what we have in Washoe County, Lake Tahoe and Incline Village. We need to preserve the charm of Incline Village. We also have another issue. Your emergency management team is undergoing a study for fire evacuation. That includes Incline Village. I'm the Chair of the Cab in District Two, South Valley's Washoe Valley. We went through the Davis Fire. As Chair of the Cab, I'm concerned. How do we evacuate not only the people in the valley along Mount Rose Highway and Arrow Creek, but also those that will pour down from Incline Village should that fire that almost went up the mountain into the Tahoe Basin? How do we evacuate? I think it would be wise on your part to table this, number 16, before you, until the Washoe County Emergency Management Study comes out, and I'm glad to hear that Incline has their own study being done. Maybe you need to wait for all kinds of reasons, your job. Number one job is to protect life and property of the citizens you were elected to oversee. Please table this, number 16. Thank you.
Jim McNamara, followed by Ellie Waller.
I am your appointed representative on the TRPA Planning Commission. I'm also representative for Washoe County residents, especially up in Incline. I've tried my best to get a good handle on their concerns, on everything from insurability to evacuation and housing. And I want to say from listening to everything, I support what Washoe County is trying to do in the, in the area plan. I've gone to the meetings where residents, not these particular residents, but some of them, show up and explain their needs as far as housing goes. We also have people that come up and talk about evacuation and what their concerns are. We've had multiple, multiple meetings with the fire chiefs, emergency management, sheriffs, and they've learned a tremendous amount over the last 20 years, everything from the Angora Fire to the Davis Fire. It's a learning curve, and we've got people up there that have been in emergency management and fire positions for 30, 40 years. They are very capable people. They understand that what we're trying to do They understand that what we're trying to do is not to develop new cities up there and add thousands of people. We're trying to change what's up there. The rampant development that occurred in Incline and Crystal Bay in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, when Boise Cascade started this, we would not allow that kind of building these days at all. It would be too unsafe. It wouldn't, wouldn't be okay anywhere. But nonetheless, that's what we have. Evacuation problems really exist all the way up through Incline, old places, Jupiter, Apollo, Jennifer, Upper Tiner, those are going to be fire traps. And the homes that are up there now are not defensible because of terrain and other factors where they, where they're sighted. What we're merely trying to do is redevelop small area of, of the town center to not only give protection, where people could actually shelter in place, but we could also add some housing that, right now, people can't, can't afford that work up there. I mean sheriffs, firefighters, teachers, necessary, essential workers. Without them, we're not going to have a community up there. So we can't just dismiss that idea of providing, we're not providing housing, we're trying to make it buildable for them. Thank you for your time. Thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you. Ellie Waller, followed by John Appolito.
Good afternoon, Ellie Waller, Douglas County resident. The Bay State Compact charges TRPA with establishing a regional plan for the Lake Tahoe Basin as a roadmap to achieve long-term environmental goals, thresholds for the region. There are three primary growth management strategies to preserve Lake Tahoe's unique environment, limiting development, public land acquisition, and conserving natural areas. The Washoe County Area Plan proposed amendments do not address any of the growth management strategies, thus cannot make the required findings. Vote no, oppose the amendments. The TRPA Compact does not address housing, period. So why is TRPA leading the way, pushing local jurisdictions to adopt code amendments that have not been thoroughly analyzed through in a comprehensive environmental impact study? The individual area plans were not analyzed in the 2012 regional plan. TRPA is kicking the can to the local jurisdictions while regional and local impacts go unchecked. Open your eyes. Lawsuits thus happen at the local jurisdiction level. The TRPA code amendment requiring adding phase-two incentives do not guarantee a single unit will be built. In fact, continuing to allow in-lu fee programs, land donations, et cetera, further preclude the actual units from being built. The continued failures of incentive-based code allowances, along with not requiring new proposed developments to actually build the much-needed, real, affordable housing, is clearly evident in recent Washoe Tahoe approvals. Requesting additional perks of height increases, less parking, 100% coverage in town centers create cumulative impacts and unmitigated growth that have not been evaluated in the regional plan and must be. These impacts go unchecked. Furthermore, adding unmitigated population growth with short-term rentals and regional growth in Reno, Carson City, Sacramento, et cetera, is completely ignoring basin-wide jurisdictional issues. The short-term rental program has resulted in loss of affordable housing by owners kicking out renters in favor of financial gain by renting to tourists. Be reminded Tahoe is a very unique environment and cannot and should not be compared or modeled after any other location. For the health and safety of the residents and tourists alike, I request you reject these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Appolito. I've been a real estate broker in Lake Tahoe for 27 years, both in Nevada and California, and that's on the North Shore. The TRP, TRPA Governing Board, when they voted to approve these new area plan to, whatever it is, the highest-ranking elected official on the TRPA Governing Board, Secretary of State Cisco Aguilar, voted against these things that you guys are going to vote on today. And what he said was, you have to start listening to the community. We haven't seen that start to happen yet. We had a bunch of people in Incline that came up with a low, moderate-income housing area in the middle of town, and unfortunately, a developer bought one of those parcels by mistake. So he came to Alexis, and he was able to get the zoning changed to you guys from low-income housing to build $2 to $5 million condominiums. Then he decided, now, just sell it. Now it's for sale for $9 million. I don't know whose campaign he's going to contribute to. I agree with people that already spoke and only have limited time. Pam, you did an excellent job. Thank you very much. Christine Hill, super. Ann Nichols, she's the one who got me understanding what's going on. Ellie, Alex, thank you very much for your comments. I agree with what those people said. My biggest concern is getting out during a fire. I think most people know by now, you can't evacuate us. All these fires we've had around the country, and most of them don't have near as much fuel as we have in Tahoe. Here's one, evacuating Tahoe could take twice as long as projected simulations indicate. Here's one from the Reno Gazette Journal, "It will not be survivable. Lake Tahoe Fire Could Be A Death Trap During Major Wildfires." Here's one, "Future wildfires could trap tourists in Tahoe." Here's one that firemen, retired, and former fire department professionals signed about how unsafe it is, and we can't get evacuated. This is what we should be focusing on. And here's one, I think this is the one about Cisco Aguilar, "Who's Protecting Tahoe? Regulatory Agency Enamored With Developments Says Critics." Yes. When I first came to Tahoe, and when I was, first started selling real estate, I used to tell clients, TRPA, or Lake Tahoe Basin is never going to be overdeveloped because of TRPA, but now that they've lost their way and gotten into the development industry, please put a brakes on this. Vote no, make the TRPA do what's right. They cannot get us out during a fire. Thank, I'm going to give these to her for the record. Thank you.
We have nobody else signed in in chambers. We do have virtual public comment in Incline Village. First up is Stephen Johnson, followed by Helen Neff.
Hi, hello. My name is Steve Johnson. I'm a 25-year resident up in Incline Village. I want to address two specific issues that we've been talking about today and really highlight them. The first one is parking. Since the creation of Incline Village, there's never been an intelligent assessment of allocating sufficient parking spaces on the property where owners actually reside. Any casual observer can clearly see this issue by driving by any of the many existing high-density condominium developments in the evenings when the residents are home from school and work. Cars and trucks are parked all over our public streets, as there are totally insufficient numbers of spaces with the associated parcels where these people live. During the busy summer months, the shortage is compounded by the addition of trailers, boats, and RVs. For units that do function as short-term rentals, as many as five or six additional vehicles end up on the streets, the sidewalks, and in public parking. There's also a huge issue during the winter with public parking restrictions, which is, our winter is six months long up here, when legal, vehicles are illegally parked all on the streets, day and night, preventing the proper clearing of snow from our roadways. Vehicles end up parking literally wherever possible, including many illegal spots, creating chaos, impeding snow clearance, and promoting the erosion of soils which wash into our Lake Tahoe. When I first moved to Incline Village 25 years ago, the county did issue parking violations for impeding snow removal. No longer. Ticketing cars and trucks would be impractical and a serious imposition on our low-income, hard-working residents living in the condo units. The plan says that the current minimum of one to two parking spaces per unit. Well, that's, that, that's completely inadequate, and it's a misconception and an exaggeration. The authors of the plan fail to recognize that the currency occupancy rates of condos and other affordable housing units far exceed the intended rates. Many condos have more than one family residing in them, with multiple adults who all own vehicles. The truth is that if we had add additional high-density housing, these units will also have many more residents than were originally planned for. I believe the plan proposes to reduce, reduce parking requirements to .7 spaces per unit? That's crazy. It's, it's completely unworkable. We need more parking spaces, not less. Please drive down Southwood Boulevard or Northwood Boulevard anytime to see the problem, especially during the winter months, when illegally parked vehicles are buried in snow when the plows attempt to clear our roads. It's an unsafe situation that would only be worsened by increasing housing density and reducing parking requirements. My second issue is on bicycles. It would appear that the authors of the plan believe that providing parking spaces for bicycles substitutes for needing parking spaces for vehicles? And if residents have parking spaces for their bikes, they won't drive a car? Well, that might work during the summer months, but you know, that's a total nonstarter during the winter season, which up here lasts for about six minutes, or six months.
Helen Neff, followed by Scott Teich.
Hi, Helen Neff, Incline Village resident. The proposed amendments to the Tahoe Area Plan for Incline Village in Crystal Bay do not reflect the safety values and needs of our local residents. The key issues raised by our community are clearly stated in the staff report. First and foremost, wildfire evacuation in an area already highly vulnerable with limited evacuation routes. Second, impacts on our community character with the proposed taller buildings altering the Tahoe landscape. Third, reduced parking standards that ignore the needs of essential workers who depend on their vehicles for their livelihood. Fourth, the definition of achievable housing, which lacks income requirements and instead creates incentives for market rate projects rather than affordable apartments. And finally, ongoing concerns about deep restriction enforcement, which has historically been weak and lacks transparency. Many of these same objections were voiced last fall to TRPA, yet they were largely dismissed as the phase-two amendments advanced through committees and were approved by the Governing Board in December. This disregard for evacuation safety and a one-size-fits-all approach to code amendments ignores the vast differences between Tahoe's northwest and south shores. To be clear, we strongly support affordable housing for our workforce, but approving amendments that allow taller buildings with reduced parking under the banner of achievable housing will not deliver what is needed. We strongly support public safety, which includes evacuation planning and transportation safety changes to our roads, both areas that require priority attention before approving amendments that allow taller buildings and higher population density. Community trust depends on transparency, responsiveness, and collaboration. Stronger outcomes come from listening to those most impacted, not handing down predetermined solutions. I urge you to listen to residents, oppose these amendments, and advocate for a process that truly respects local input. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Teich, followed by Lynn Whitstone.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Teich. I first moved to Crystal Bay in 1980. Please pardon my prepared statement. When you land at the Reno Tahoe International Airport, the giant sign says, "The future of Reno is more." Notice it doesn't say Incline Village is more. Reno gets the future, Incline gets the more. Vote no. Incline is once again Washoe County's big, beautiful annuity. And is our District One Commissioner fighting for us? Doesn't look that way. Looks like peacemaking with fellow commissioners, keeping a political career on track, political career on track, and leaving Incline Village on the hook. I voted and contributed for that. I stand snuckered. We're told the TRPA is forcing Washoe County to adopt this community plan. Come on, Washoe County can think for itself, can't it? Don't rubber stamp a plan that wrecks your own backyard. Unlimited growth, undefined housing, no parking requirements, Bay Area-style traffic with restricted infrastructure. The fantasy that families with kids, dogs, skis, coolers, and bikes are just going to hop on the bus? Yeah, right. What about evacuation? Everybody knows it's not if, but when. There isn't even a clear plan for today's residents. None disclosed without threatening national security, of course. What about our security? So the solution is add thousands of more cars? Genius. Or gas on the fire. Pun intended. Incline Village and North Tahoe will be changed forever, not for the weather. Vote no. Thank you very much.
Lynn Whitstone, followed by Tim Delaney.
Hi, my name is Lynn Whitstone, and I live on Apollo Way in, which is on the north edge of town. It's an area that was labeled by a previous speaker as indefensible in a wildfire. My primary concern with these proposed amendments is wildfire evacuation. And I want to bring to your attention some recent developments which should be yet another cause to reject these amendments at this time. As you're aware, a major partner to local government in the event of a wildfire is the Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit, which is part of the U.S. Forest Service. Recent decision reductions and layoffs at the Forest Service have been well-publicized. More recently, on July 24th, the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture announced a reorganization plan, which includes further reductions and will change the management structure of the Forest Service. There are currently, there's currently Regional Office in Vallejo, California, which manages all of the Forest Service units in the Sierra. And there's also one in Oregon. Both of those will be closed. I'm assuming the LTBMU will report to the nearest office, which will be in Salt Lake City. There will be a significant loss of management knowledge of wildfire and environmental issues in the Lake Tahoe Basin and the Sierra in general. This will far further harm the LTBMU's ability to respond effectively to wildfires up here. As long-term government executives for the state of California, when we purchased our home in 1997, we believed we could rely on government to help keep us safe. We have lost protection by the TRPA and are losing confidence in the LTBMU. We're scared, particularly after the Calder Fire and last year's Davis Fire, which was four miles from our house, and was mentioned earlier. We are looking to Washoe County as the only entity which is currently in a position to keep things from getting even worse. Please reject the proposed plan amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Delaney, followed by Aaron Vanderpoel.
Hello, Tim Delaney. Nice to hear all of you again. Fabulous public speaking here that I'm hearing. My apologies, I'm a little worn out. I got on the road at, I think, 5:00 in the morning or something like that, drove out of the Santa Cruz Mountains to beat a path up here to try to figure out why folks have their thumbs on my stack of cash. So I'm going to give a little bit of a leg up here to wealthy people in Incline Village that might be afraid to speak because of all these obverse, you know, it's the buzzword brigade, right? You want to make them feel bad. Well, they can all point to me and say, well, what about Tim? You see, I'm part of the lower caste system. That's right. I worked from the very bottom up. And to see, see, the thing is here, as a kid, my childhood was enormously difficult. And yes, I was in and out of jails, and my best friends in life were combat veterans in my family and extolled to my family, and law enforcement officers. Interesting, huh? So, the thing is, is I climb out of all of that, and I get a Pell Grant-funded engineering physics degree, and I look at all this, and I have an American society here that will not listen to me. So you hear that word, group think, right? So you remember that little episode over, was it South Korea, Japan, and everything? And everybody was like throwing up that colored dust in the air, and they thought that was a good time and everything? Well, do you think, if I was in that society, speaking to those people, that somehow I can convince them and tell them, look, with my life experiences and all my industrial work, that's not a very smart thing to do? You see? That's what you're doing here right now with Incline Village. I don't like, I don't like what you're doing, Alexis. You're going to destroy my town and have a bunch of big structures here that are above the trees. And what helped me out in life is structures below the trees and seeing the wind blowing those trees back and forth in the snow. It gave me a reason to live. All right? You need to think about all that. When I was a young man, I actually had about 15 officers, half of them pointing guns at me. Think about that. And think about what I climbed out And think about what I climbed out of. I climbed out of that, and I ended up with that engineering physics degree, and I did a lot of good work for our national government here. So I climb out of that, I buy a piece of property, I save all my little beans, and now people have their thumb on my cash pile. I don't like that. That's evil, it's wicked, it's disgusting. You need to get out of my town with your agendas, all right? Thank you. You take it easy.
Aaron Vanderpoel, followed by Stephen Ross.
Yeah, Aaron Vanderpoel, that was nice to follow by somebody else that grew up here and is in a class that I am, and also an academic that turned into academic. I grew up here, I spent over four decades here, and I'm here to tell you that what you're doing is destroying the future of everybody that can hear me. I've sent a letter, I'm in a bullet point, four points. What you're doing may increase short term, and it's all short-term thinking, it might make things a little bit portable for short term, but one, ADUs significantly increase wealth inequality. If you put an ADU on a piece of property, you're increasing that value way above, out of reach of a single-family home that I would like to buy. Two, building more doesn't work in the system where we keep giving more money to the wealthy. You know, when, how many parcels does David Duffield own, Ellison, you know, all these people behind their other LLC names that are buying up everything? There's something in the stock market called low flow. When small amount of people own and lock up all the stock, then it's very volatile and usually just goes to the moon way above what the value should be. Three, deed restriction. If you deed restrict my neighborhood next to an undeed-restricted neighborhood of the wealthiest people in the world, it turns a slum of renters that eventually is just controlled and owned by them. You know, that it doesn't make sense how you're restricting the poor, you're unrestricting the wealthy. TRPA said, de-restriction creates more regulation, more bureaucracy, we have to spend more tax dollars. You can't, TPRA said at the Affordable Housing Workshop, they can't, they don't know about funding, continued funding for these programs like Placemate, which gives $7,000 of our tax dollars, to a wealthy, empty homeowner. Why are you taking my tax dollars, giving it to the wealthy, not taxing them that their homes are sitting empty? You know, I, somebody pointed out to me, Incline Village has 9,100 population, I guess. So why is it we can't find people to work at our post office? You know, these houses keep getting bigger and bigger. You know, I was lucky that my mom and I bought a condo, we spent every dime that we had into it, that's the only reason I'm still here. I don't think I'll be able to afford to be here in the future because HOA prices keep going up, we can't get fire insurance. You know, even owning a home, I don't see a future for me here. This is ridiculous. I'm dumbfounded by what is going on here. You're destroying my future of living here, even in this condo. Nobody wants to be in a condo with HOA fees, we want a single-family home. I can't afford that. I have lots more to say here, I'm running out of time. You know, we outlaw STRs in my HOA, we have workforce housing, like more normal people. You're welcome. You know, why aren't they doing this? This is, this is unheard of.
Stephen Ross, followed by Niam Sorin Udis.
My name is Stephen Ross, I live here at Incline Village, and I would like to say to the commissioners, please stand up. Stand up for the people that live here in Incline Village in Crystal Bay. Stand up for what you probably know is what's right. Not right for the developers, not right for those that are going to make money off of this plan, but stand up for the people that live here and have to be able to be evacuated in case of an emergency. So stand up. Do what's right for the community, not what's just right for those developers. Stand up for what's right for the environment, for what's right for the lake itself. We want to maintain water quality. We drink our water from this lake. It's not appropriate for us to continue to pave over the community so that there's increased runoff into the lake. It doesn't do us any, any good, and it certainly harms our water quality. So please stand up and do what's right for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Niam Sorin Udis.
Yes.
Followed by John Felice.
Hi, my name is Niam Sorin Udis. I have lived here full-time since 2011. I live in the upper Tindor area where previous people discussed about fire evacuation. I live on a one-way road, and if I had to exit, I don't know how I could escape the fire, and it's pretty scary. And I think the amendments will cause lots of environmental problems, to start a fire, water quality will decrease, and the traffic will increase more, and sewer will be worse, and parking space will be problematic. And I would like to give an example of, for example, I think it was in 2023, I was stuck on 28 trying to head from Incline Village to Crystal Bay, not very far, I would say two miles, but I was stuck on it because there's no way out of it. There was a gas leak and construction work was going on on the road, and there was gas leak, and the whole road was shut down, and there was no way to get out or get to my home. And I think it will even get worse if this amendment goes through. And please vote against these amendments and the high vertical sprawl in Incline Village and Crystal Bay, and keep Lake Tahoe pristine and safe for the residents, please. Thank you.
Thank you. John Felice, followed by Rhonda Tyser.
Yes, John Felice, a family property owner since 1987 in Incline Village. The workforce housing section in this amendment is written, "It will not be supporting the true housing needs of our workforce in our community." Housing for workers is at all-time low, and this proposal is not even coming close to addressing that. And especially, how will the pricing structure even be enforced since our current short-term rental violations are not monitored or enforced with occupancy volumes and parking restrictions that are continuously overlooked? Traffic congestion and our safety continues to grow, problems continue to grow, and a solid emergency evacuation studies and plans continue to be ignored or approved and planned well. Comments concerning original growth of Incline housing in the 60s and 70s is valid, however, by the Tarpa representative for our community, however, and perhaps not what we should be doing today, but it is what we have and what we need to respect and not add to overdevelopment at this point. These amendments have strong potential to add loss of life and lower the quality of life in Lake Tahoe Basin and will be devastating for many. Please show your constituents and the children of our future that this will be stopped here, and you choose and to support and make good governance for the future of our lake communities and help eliminate blood on anybody's hands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rhonda Tyser.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Rhonda Tyser, Incline Village, I've already handed to you the 260-plus petitions signed by our community members, asking you to forego approving the TRPA mandated amendments until you've studied the situation here for fire evacuation. You're in process of doing that, so I just repeat that plea. But I have something else I want to share. And that is something about ADUs. As you know, I have been protesting ADUs because of our crooked streets and because of our small, deformed lots. And now I'd like to tell you that I know you think you're under the gun from the state to do this, but I have something I'd like to read. AB 396, enacted this year by the Nevada Legislature, mandates that Washoe County enact ordinances authorizing ADUs on residential property. And if such an ordinance is not adopted, ADUs are authorized by state law on any residentially-zoned property without restriction. So you needed to adopt an ordinance, you think, in order to have any control over the issue. But there is a provision in the law, and in the bill that appears, it says that an ordinance is not required in a region, in a county, or city in this state for which there has been created by Interstate Compact, a regional planning agency. And since the only regional planning agency of which I'm aware is TRPA, it means that the state mandate for county ordinance as it relates to ADUs does not apply to Incline Village. So I'm asking you once again, please do not crowd our acreage with additional housing that will overuse our water supply and our electrical lines and our water lines and so on, to say nothing of crowding the streets in the case of an evacuation. Thank you again.
Thank you. We have nobody else signed in, there are emails to be placed on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before I open it back over to the board, I think it would be good to get some clarification from our DA, Mr. Large, on some of the statements made about the requirements of adopting this and kind of what that would look like. I think it would be helpful to get your read on this.
Michael Large, for the record, from the Washoe County District Attorney's Office. Thank you, Madam Chairman. The, this is a complicated issue, and I understand the passion that is driving a lot of this. From the legal standpoint, we've heard, as Ms. Oakley said during her presentation, and we heard from a number of the public commenters, these are TRPA-mandated amendments. TRPA's housing amendments preempt local regulatory authority. We don't have a choice. Whether we vote no or yes on this item today, the housing amendments will go into effect. A no vote will essentially mean that TRPA is still going to affect, the practical effect will be that the proposals by staff that we did get, the carve-outs that we did, were able to obtain, will not go into effect, and neither will the cleanups for our bill. The other major issue is, it puts in jeopardy Washoe County's ability to make any changes in our area plan. TRPA can assume control over all planning in Incline Village and Crystal Bay, and Washoe County would have no input until we pass those housing amendments. The way TRPA is structured, the compact went into effect, TRPA, they have the ability to pass their own code of ordinances. Those ordinance are binding on us in this area. Our staff worked, as reflected in the staff report, to try to get some of those things that were points of concern from our staff that were reflected from our community, and we tried to do some workarounds with that. Those were rejected by TRPA. So we're left with, you know, the choice that we, you know, the choice between passing it or not passing it. It's going to have the same practical effect, the housing amendments will go into effect, whether we like it or not. Whether or not we can keep control over our planning in the Incline Village and Crystal Bay area, that's the question.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, Kat can speak to that more better than I can, but that's my, that would be my two cents on that.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Oakley, do you have anything to add on that?
This is working?
There it is.
Okay. Cat Oakley, Washoe County Planning, Mr. Large covered it. The kind of bottom line is that TRPA does have the authority to determine whether or not our area plan and the implementing regulation, as they would call it, or as we would call it, the Tahoe modifiers, are in conformance with their regional documents. And if we end up in a situation where we haven't adopted the Phase Two housing amendments, obviously we're not in conformance, and that would have potential implications on us being able to exercise the local regulatory authority that this area plan enables us to have around other issues as well. So that was kind of that last point he was getting at, that I think is important to our maintaining that local authority insofar as we have it over the Tahoe Basin.
Thank you. All right.
Madam Chair, if I may, while Ms. Oakley's up there as well. An evacuation study is not going to impact TRPA's housing amendments, the housing mandate. The idea of tabling this until a later date, that has been brought up, and I understand that that is, they, TRPA has required us to make certain incentives, and that mandate does not include criteria regarding evacuation. And so the TRPA housing amendments would not be influenced by anything that that plan would come up with. Now, subsequent to that evacuation plan coming out, there may be changes, and that may TRPA may want to address, hopefully that we can improve potential evacuation scenarios. But in terms of these housing amendments that I threw you today, that evacuation plan wouldn't go into effect. And as Ms. Oakley mentioned earlier, the deadline for this was in December of 2024, that we were to implement this, because we've been working with staff throughout this period. If we don't pass, then there's always the chance that TRPA is just going to make the decision that they are not going to, they're going to impose these housing amendments without our support.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, I will open it up to the board. Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it's tough starting with the legal because of all the public comment we've received, the emails, the e-comment, the signatures on the petition, and it's hard, you know, when you see this outpouring of concern, and you raise some very valid points, and we fall back on, at least I do, the legal advice of our county, and unfortunately, this one is really complicated. And I first wanted just to validate your concerns and thank you for speaking out. This is a tough one. But I also wanted to share what the county is also being done. Item 16 doesn't talk about fire, doesn't talk about fiery evacuation, but if I had a dollar for every time it came up just today or in the emails we've received over the last few days, it is a major concern for you all. And as you know, we are all fire commissioners for Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. It is a hat we wear regularly, it is a lens that we look through all the time. And as somebody who lives in a part of unincorporated Washoe County that has only three entrances and three exits, is three ways in, three ways out, and we're surrounded by mountains with 20,000 people, I feel your concerns, I hear you loud and clear, that this is something that is real, and that fear, there's nothing that we're ever going to say or do that's going to help ease that stress. So I did want to take a moment, if I could kick it over to Dave Solero, just to give us a quick update, so we know that we're working on it and we are looking forward to making progress in this very important area.
Appreciate that. For the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager, and as earlier, we proclaimed August Emergency Management Awareness Month. I think it's important to understand that Washoe County is always working through emergency management needs and issues. We have 13 identified hazards in our area, and so fire is one of those. All of the studies and everything we do actually takes into effect, what do we do when all of those things occur? And so I think it's really important to understand that while February 25th, 2025, we accepted a donation to create an evacuation study, really what that's to do is to identify the most vulnerable locations in our communities, whether it's Incline Village, or Collin Ranch, or the city of Reno, depending on where it is, based on all of those hazards, so that we can identify what, you know, needs to occur in those areas when it comes to mitigation of the possible evacuation needs. We have heard from public comment today that there is a lack of locations in and out. I think that can be actually said for a lot of locations within Washoe County. If you look at Cold Springs as an example, there's two ways in and out, one less than what Washoe, you know, the Incline Village area has. And so, but when you take a look at the fuel loading and all of the different things, the mitigation, all those things that go into it, that's really what we're studying to really identify those vulnerable locations within Washoe County so that we can create the plan to make sure that we are doing what we need to do. And as, you know, Council Large mentioned, this may change what we've got to do with our planning and things in the future, but it really has no effect on this Tahoe area plan as it stands today. So I hope that's the information that you were looking for.
And I am glad you asked Mr. Solero about that evacuation study. Do you know the timing of that by any chance?
Again, for the record, Dave Solero, I do know that we are working through putting the RFQ out. We've met with stakeholders from all of our citizen advisory board meeting, or, sorry, citizens advisory boards with other, you know, the fire districts, all of those people to put together the scope of work, not only for the actual study itself, but also the analysis of the evacuation routes and all of those other sorts of things. So it's a pretty involved study, and again, it goes all across Washoe County and to include the city of Reno and city sparks.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too would like to echo a lot what was already shared in terms of Commissioner Garcia. This is the part of being a commissioner that, quite frankly, if you look at the handbook of of the duties of a commissioner, part of it defines a hearing much like this that creates a judicial framework. So even though we are not judges and we're not attorneys, we have to depend on legal counsel to give us guidance. And we all have the opportunity, I'm sure, to have met with staff prior to this. And one of the questions that I wanted clarification was what if we do vote no? Without even hearing anything, and your concerns are valid, and your concerns are concerning. If we put a moratorium, the TRPA would ignore that and put in already what's going to be put into place. And in fact, if we did the right thing and stand up to voting no, TRPA would put it in place. If we actually created, you know, a condition of saying, we won't do this, we're going to vote no or vote yes with conditions, TRPA doesn't have to abide by those. And the reality is, is as of December 24, 2024, TRPA could have put all of the conditions and the, the outline of these amendments as they wanted them, but Washoe County staff worked on things and listening to you. So as an example, when, when, when I met with staff, it was clear of parking. You know, everyone is very blessed to have a beautiful jewel that many of us know and you all enjoy in our backyard, but we all know about parking. And Washoe County actually reduced the parking that was already recommended by TRPA and made it actually, and reduced it. So there are provisions that Washoe County put into place that much align with some of the things that are concerning, not only to the folks that are here, but the folks who shared their comments from, from Incline. The reality is, is that I don't think it's prudent to restrict Washoe County's ability to have a say in the Washoe County Master Plan that governs Incline Village as an example. If we vote no, TRPA will actually take that authority essentially away and, and, and create, we will, we will be constrained to whatever they say, which could be worse in this case, I'm giving the example of parking that made things better. If we say no, TRPA is going to do this. I, I don't know, I don't know how else to make this any clearer. And I really appreciate, you know, Chair Hill, you asking for clarification on that, because I think it's important that everyone hears this. Do we want to override the TRPA on, on, on various things? Well, we don't have that ability to do it. And the extension that was given from 20, from December of 2024 to now allowed some of those provisions, as I've already mentioned. And so as, as tough as this is, I think some of the energy should also, for all of the residents that are concerned about the TRPA, is look at how the TRPA's authority is and look at how that can possibly be changed, because that is governing us. It's no different, in my opinion, as anything that is legislatively defined, that if it happens at the legislature, if anything needs to change, it has to change at the legislature. This is much to that same comparison. We don't get to override the legislature, as an example. In this case, we don't get to override TRPA. We were given the opportunity, and thanks to staff, for actually working as best they could, and, and the TRPA for giving staff the ability to work through those. I'm sure those weren't necessarily the easiest meetings either, but they were trying, and that's where we landed. So I just need everyone to understand, this is very difficult. It's very, very difficult to uphold the compliance of what we're required to do. And I, I know that it seems that you don't believe us, I think, and so I don't know if I should ask counsel again to repeat what he said, because I'm seeing some folks shaking heads as if that counsel is not giving us correct advice. And if that is true, then there's challenges that could be made, but we have a responsibility to listen to counsel, and I'm going to listen to counsel. And I'm going to thank again staff for going through this process and in doing the research. This has been going on since 2021, essentially. And the research I, I looked at in all of the meetings, and I also would like to thank DA Large for being really clear on what authority we have and what the governing authority that TRPA has over Washoe County. So it is important that your voice is heard, but only to the extent that we can legally act, and that's the constraint that we are faced with. So I know that's hard. It's hard listening. There's concerns. I have to believe that if the evacuation study does reveal various things that need to be changed to accommodate the public safety, that the TRPA will actually take that into consideration. I spoke with legal counsel about that very point, to ensure that if that has any provision of, or more than one provision, that puts people's safety in jeopardy, that the TRPA, that Washoe County can bring that to the TRPA and exercises best as it can accommodations to address whatever needs to change. And that can happen, but the ultimate authority falls with the TRPA. I've lived here for 38 years, and one of the public commenters, I believe, one made it very distinct in saying, I really never worried about anything that was concerning about where I lived because of the TRPA. And it has changed, is what, what I remember the public commenter addressing. But that was true. And if it has changed, I think, again, there's opportunities for you to look at how you can actually, at a high level, look at having that change. But we can't do it here. We don't have that authority. So again, thank you for sharing all of your concerns, which are valid, and I too am going to be eager to learn what the study is going to reveal as well. And I hope if there are concerns, that those, again, are exercised for serious review by the TRPA. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had public comment this morning, we've had public comment this afternoon. Rhonda Tysner shows up with 260 names that oppose this. Steve Dolan spoke twice this afternoon and this morning. Doug Flannerty made his comments, Richard Miner, Jack Dalton, again, Steve Nolan, Roxanna Dunn, Christina Hill, a former, I believe she said she was the chair of TRPA, so she gave some insightful information about their position, water quality, lots and lots and lots of reasons, you know. If there was a sports book here and we had a place to bet, how do you think this vote's going to go? Okay? All right? So think about that. We've got a situation now where the big bad wolf, the boogie, boogeyman in the room is TRPA. I wasn't voted into office by anybody at TRPA. I was voted in the office by the citizens of this county. The citizens of the county expect the folks on this dais to stand up for what they're looking for, and that's not going to happen. What's going to happen is we rationalize, if we don't do it, what are they going to do to us? Well, here's what, here's what an American would do. They would stand up to TRPA, and we would say, this is what we want to do, this is what our citizens want to do, and this is what we should be doing. And so you as citizens don't have much of a voice, even here in this county, and you even have less of a voice with TRPA. But maybe, just maybe, Washoe County Commissioners could have a voice at the table with TRPA and get some things straightened out there. So that's going to be my position on this. I'm going to oppose this, and I'm going to support the people, because the people are the one paying the freight here, paying the taxes, keeping this county running, and we want to make sure that our constituents are happy with the service we provide. We want to be the voice to TRPA to stand up and say, we don't like this, our citizens don't like this. So this stuff of, if we don't do it, they're going to do it to us? Hooey, this is America, you know? We don't, Americans don't, you know, laws and rules are made by men and women, and laws and rules and regulations can be changed by men and women. And that's what I'm suggesting. We stand up as a group and stand up for our citizens and go to TRPA and get this figured out. To me, this is all about public safety, narrow roads, high density. All of this stuff is, is public safety. So from a public state, safety standpoint, and a public safety standpoint only, we should be supporting the folks that live, live up there and have to live up there and deal with this. The people are paying some of the highest property taxes in the county, I want to remind everybody. And, and, and stand up and support those folks and go to TRPA and say, this is what our citizens want, not what you want. We vote, we were voted in by the citizens of this county, not anybody by TRPA. Believe me, if they had a vote for me, I wouldn't be here. I can assure you of that. Okay? And the same for the rest of them. You know, this is, this is not about what TRPA wants to do. This is what the citizens want us to do on their behalf. So I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments today. I know that there are concerns in the community, and evacuation is something that, is something that is very important to this board. We have been pushing staff to get this evacuation study done. It's moving forward, and we're really excited to get the results of that. I know that, I, I also just don't want to discount our emergency management team who works with our fire departments and our sheriff's departments and other agencies all, all around this area to do exercises and evacuation work. And so I think to make any claims that there are no plans on if there's an emergency in Incline Village or Crystal Bay, I don't think that that is a appropriate thing to say. And I must say on the record that, that our team is working on those things all the time, working on exercises, tabletop, and also physical, real evacuations all the time in, in the community, and take that very seriously. I think that when we're talking about the environment, we also need to remember that vehicles are a major contributor to Lake Clarity as well. And having folks live in the community that they serve is very important. And I've told stories of many people in, in the Incline Village and Crystal Bay community who aren't here, they can't come to these meetings, but they would love to live in the community that they serve. I talked to the principals of the schools in town, I talked to the hospitals, I talked to the grocery stores, as well as the bowling alley and all of the different amenities in the community, and they would appreciate having better public transportation, which obviously occurs with higher densities. And then also, they would like to have their employees who would like to live in the basin to live there. I don't think realistically, this is going to be, you're going to see some sort of Manhattan like project in Incline Village. There's very few parcels that this could probably happen on, and these need to be deed restricted. I think that the point about Washoe County working with TRPA on deed restrictions is a good and fair point, and something that I have been talking internally to the Washoe County staff on, and I think that there's some work to be done there. But TRPA has done a really good job on really managing those deed restrictions. So I think that this is the right move for Incline Village and Crystal Bay, and I know it's difficult, but I think that it's going to improve quality of life for everyone and, and ensure that we can have a workforce in the community. So I am prepared to make the motion. If there's no other commissioners who have comments, I'm not seeing any that do. And so I move to adopt ordinance number 1743, which is an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, within Articles 220, the Tahoe area, and 220.1, Tahoe Area Design Standards, and Attachment B, and connected where there are two, subject to finding the conformance with the Tahoe Regional Plan and adoption by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, adopt the Master Plan Amendment Case WMPA 25-0001, which is an amendment to the Tahoe Area Plan as provided in Attachment C, Exhibit C1. I am looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We have a motion and a second. Any questions from the board on that? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All right, that motion passes, three to one, and Commissioner Clark is in the negative. So thank you very much, everyone, for your time on that today. We are now going to move to our final public here, or public comment. Mr. Solero?
Item number 17 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers, and comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Catherine Yarte, followed by Penny Brock.
You've been waiting a long time.
You know, I wasn't even planning to speak. So yeah, thank you for this. My name is Catherine Yarte. Like I said, I wasn't actually planning to speak. The wild horse issue is what I came to hear. I obviously have a hefty background in horse management. I've, my husband and I have been horse trainers for the last 10 years, and we've trained well over 100 Mustangs in our time, at least two dozen of those being Virginia Range horses. I say all that to say that I also have history volunteering with the BLM and doing range land management, doing adoptions and that sort of thing. One of the issues that I just like, it's kind of my little soapbox, sorry, I didn't prepare comments, so I'm a little scattered, and that was a lot to go through, is the biggest issue with the Virginia Range horses, because they are not under the federal protection. They live in this gray area between livestock and wild, and it's a disservice to the horses and it's a disservice to the community. The reason they're overpopulated is there is no management. There is no amount of birth control. There's decades of research showing that birth control is ineffective on multiple ranges. And the history of the source, the horse population's growth shows that, that birth control is ineffective, even in smaller ranges. It's been proven. So I just say that to make sure that there is a lot of concern, I think it's really valid that at least we're getting the fencing done, but this will continue to be an issue until the actual issue is addressed, which is classifying them somewhere between, they can't live in this gray area, between livestock and wild animal. If they're wild animals, they need to be managed as wild animals, not providing them food, not providing them water, but managing them, whatever that means. As a horse lover, I don't love the idea of culls, but I also recognize that what they are living under right now is not sustainable for anyone. And if they are livestock, then they need to be managed as livestock, which is going to be rotating them off the ranges, controlling population in areas where there is not enough forage. They are degradating the land. Any animal that's that overpopulated will degrade the land that they're on. And that is something for the horse's welfare that needs to be addressed. Additionally, while there are nonprofits that do manage the horses on the range, it's very selective management, and one of the things that we see, not so much in Washoe County, but there is a very dense population in Silver Springs, where the horses have genetic defects such as clubbed feet that are incredibly painful, and those horses are allowed to continue to breed. If that's a genetic flaw, those horses will continue to create even more unhealthy horses. So proper management means healthy range lands for all animals on the range, not just the ones that we feel special about. And horses cannot continue to live in a gray area successfully for the people or for the animals themselves. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Penny Brock, followed by Pamela Mahoney-Sigdenis.
Penny Brock, for the record, as you may know, yesterday, the state of Nevada got a cyber attack that came out later in the day. It was a cyber attack. As a result, this article says Nevada government shuts down after cyber attack. Did it affect Washoe County? I only know from the election's standpoint, because our elections department feeds into the state of Nevada, our voter registration feeds into Nevada, also the DMV, and they do voter registration. So what does this mean for elections? One of the concerns is as a result of the Nevada, the Department of Justice investigating the state of Nevada elections from 2020 and moving forward, is that the Secretary of State, this started in June, at the same time the Secretary of State Aguilar said that Dominion is, they are updating the Dominion equipment and that election data will be lost. Your job is to preserve our records, our, our voting records for five years. I would, and you are responsible for the elections department, not the interim county manager, but you are elected county commissioners. So I would ask that you investigate this, you find out, have our voting records from the last five years, which includes 2020, did those disappear? I sent a public records request and asked about this. What I got back said, well, Dominion was last updated in 2023, but they did not update this 2025 update happening by the Secretary of State in every county that has Dominion, well, probably ES and S. Fifteen counties have Dominion. Two counties have what's called ES and S, which is just as bad as Dominion, but I assume those two are also being updated, those two counties. But my county, our concern is about what's happening in Washoe County. So I would ask you, as the commissioners who oversee, you're responsible, the Department of Justice will knock on the commissioner doors about this, probably the county manager also, but not to the degree of the county commissioners, because legally, you are responsible. So I would ask you to find out if our voting records from the last five years have been destroyed or will be destroyed. This is supposed to be done, I think, by the end of August, this update. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Mahoney-Sigdenis, followed by Roxanna Dunn.
This has been an exhausting day, but it's also been an exhausting several years. A few of the commissioners mentioned that we should be looking at the TRPA and the state. Well, guess what? We have bent. The difference is, all of us who have routinely showed up at TRPA meetings, at the state legislature, giving comment, doing research, begging and pleading for our public servants to do what's in the best interests of the public, we looked at every opportunity to do that. We don't have the authority that you all here on the dais have. So I just want to make it very clear, this is not our first attempt. You're our last resort, and we look to you today to stand with us. I want to point out your mission, which is to work together to provide and sustain a safe, secure, and healthy community. Your vote today, by the way, thank you, Commissioner Clark, for standing up for the citizens, just proved you need to just scrub out that mission, because you're clearly not upholding it. Does council pay your salary? I don't think so. Does TRPA pay your salary? I don't think so. We pay your salary. The cowardice demonstrated on this dais today takes my breath away. Honestly, you all should not be in public servant roles if you're not willing to do the hard work. The hard work is figuring out what the needs of your constituents are and doing what's right by them. Otherwise, stop collecting your salary. I am just stunned by what I've witnessed here today. We came to you looking for help, and you turned your backs on us. I hope you can live with that.
Roxanna Dunn, followed by Alexander Sigdenis.
Sorry, a little more abuse. An earlier draft of the comments I gave regarding the TAP amendments ended with, I know this means a fight with TRPA. I hope that you are up for it, because I know we are. I took it out, because I thought it was a little too contentious. I now realize that being contentious is exactly what we need here. We are selling out the bigger issues of evacuation danger and luxury housing in the guise of workforce housing for the crumb concession of parking. Hiding under the blanket, TRPA made me do it. Well, I'm sorry, that's extremely disappointing. Thank you, Commissioner Clark, for standing up.
Alexander Sigdenis, followed by Doug Flaherty.
I'm saddened to hear some of the remarks from the dais on the Tahoe Plan Amendments, except for from the far end. What I heard is that this vote was almost about expedience, not about doing what's right, and that's really sad. In addition to being a retired military officer, I spent a good two decades in corporate communications at two global 50 companies, have written more testimony to the US Congress and the EU Parliament than I can recall. What I can share from that experience is, with all due respect, council might edit or comment on policies, but not dictate them. That's the sole responsibility of corporate officers and the public officials, as the case may be. Finally, if this commission is truly concerned about workforce housing, revisit your own STR policy and implement restrictions and a cap. Let's make our available housing units available to workers instead of evermore tourists. Thank you.
Doug Flaherty, followed by Ellie Waller.
What happened here, Doug Flaherty, resident Incline Village, so what happened here today didn't make me mad. I'm not more concerned than when I came in, but I am disgusted. I grew up on the other side of Peavine Mountain out here, when Sted was an Air Force Base. I went to Sted school. My stepfather was a turn-of-the-century Nevada cowboy, leather maker, carpenter, horse breaker. He did whatever he could to put food on the table. Old Nevada was alive then. You people up here, except for Mr. Clark, shame this state. Really? The rodeo, the Red Cross? No, 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 I didn't, I didn't state a name, Alexis, don't.
Address the full board.
I am, I am. I didn't say Clara's name. I just said.
Please address the full board.
I, Alexis, you've shut down my, my right to speech many, many times. What are you scared of? You're scared of the truth. You're scared of shining light. This is why we have court systems, because obviously, this board is not responsive to its constituents. I'll finish my bio. I was part of Reno Ski School. Sted School would, you know, we'd come up here and catch a bus and we'd go up there. In the 1960 Winter Olympics, they took us up to Squaw Valley to learn to ski. My roots go deep here, and for anyone to soil that is disgusting. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Too bad we haven't got four more just like you up here.
Ellie Waller, followed by Ann Nichols.
Good afternoon again, Ellie Waller, Douglas County resident, six years, Placer County resident, 20 years. I go to Placer meetings, I go to Douglas meetings, I come to you folks. TRPA hijacked the entire session of the Legislative Oversight Committee. We begged several times for a citizens' day and were denied by Senator Daley. Thank you, Commissioner Clark. We do our best to raise the awareness that the public is not heard. We are thanked for coming to meetings. We plead with our commissioners and supervisors, at what expense of our personal time, we're not elected, we come here because you get elected, and we are trying to say, you're not doing enough to listen to the people. You acknowledge that you want to listen to the people. I think your DA's comment was a little conflicting and confusing. You can challenge TRPA. We're going to go to TRPA about this whole thing again. This meeting made me feel irrelevant, because you made a statement that you have to listen to legal counsel's clarification, which I don't think is entirely correct. You can say, TRPA, no. TRPA will say, we brought this Phase II housing nonsense forward, and they didn't listen to us either. Our only recourse is to carry that stick called lawsuit. Why are we expected to have to challenge everything when you should be helping us challenge these things? Again, Commissioner Clark, thank you for your outright approach to the opposition to this. We hope to see a lot more opposition to Phase III. Yes, there's going to be more nonsense that's going to be dumped into this. TRPA put you, and I've said this to Douglas County and to Placer County, you in a position to have to challenge, and you should. Thank you.
Ann Nichols, followed by John Appolito.
Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah. Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. I'm very confused. At the beginning of the meeting, up there on the board, it said, what you were approving was attainable housing. When I asked Kat what you were approving, she said, no, it's TRPA's definition, achievable housing. Well, that's confusing to us. Sounds like it's confusing to you and to your staff planner. So I don't know. What did you approve? It was on the board. It, you know, I watch this stuff, and maybe you guys' staff needs to be more clear. So I asked Kat, I said, what was the deal? She goes, oh, no, it's TRPA's definition of achievable. That's a difference. That's no income cap. Attainable, which is Governor Lombardo's, is 150% of average median income. I think that's a pretty smart definition, personally, but TRPA, of course, isn't that smart. Our representative on TRPA, Ms. Hill, Mrs. Hill, really is our only representation, which she's never, she's never gone against any of this stuff. But anyway, figure it out, you guys, before you vote for it, what is it that you voted for? It's really important. This is super important, because if it's achievable, there's no income cap. So what is it that you did today, here? Kat said, it's really achievable. Up there, it said attainable. So, thanks.
John Appolito.
Commissioner Clark, thank you very much. It was very disappointing to see you guys. You don't know what TRPA would do if you said no, if you challenged them. You really don't. You make it sound like, yeah, well, we care. If you cared, you would have been with Commissioner Clark. It's just disappointing. Alexis, you're supposed to be representing the residents of Incline Village. You haven't done that in a long time, and I think most people see that now, at least people that are watching these meetings. Pam.
Gosh.
Thank you very much. Ellie, excellent. They said it way better than I could. There's one thing that I can talk about as a real estate broker, and that is fire insurance. Right now, we have some complexes in Incline Village, condo complexes, that are not fully covered with fire insurance. So what's going to happen if we do build a bunch of 65-story or any 65-story new buildings close to them, it's going to make it even more difficult for the old properties to get insurance. And right now, we don't even have it in some of the condo complexes. You guys should stand up to TRPA. We have been trying this for a long, long time. You were our last resort, and you let us down, you especially, and you've been letting us down for a long time. And I did spend time in Carson City, and I saw the blah, 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 and the lies that happened with the TRPA. Just say no. They don't pay you, they don't control Washoe County. What you said is BS. You can decide what you want and see what TRPA does. I, I don't know how, where he went to law school. I know my daughter's in her second year, number one in her class. I have no idea. I only spent one weekend in law school. You're not supposed to be representing TRPA. You're supposed to be representing us, and you failed today, except for you. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
We have nobody else signed in. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we will move to item 18. Mr. Salero.
Item number 18 is Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports, Updates, to Includes Boards' Action Updates, A Request for Information or Topics for Future Agendas, and I have nothing left for you today.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Okay, Commissioner Andrea. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very disappointed in what took place here today. We're supposed to stand up for the citizens, our constituents. Nobody can predict what TRPA is going to do. Everybody's saying what they could be doing and what they might be doing, and at the end of the day, we need to do what we need to do to support our people and stand up for our people and go to this TRPA and tell them the citizens of this part of TRPA are not interested in doing what they want to do. So come up with an alternative. Don't threaten the county commission and have us shaking in our boots that TRPA may do something. If TRPA does do something and we didn't agree to it, then we can blame them if there's a disaster in the future. But now, we're collaborators. We're in collusion, we're in cahoots with them, and I'm not in cahoots with them. So I hope the folks at District 1 understand my position. I don't think that this went the way it should have gone for the citizens, and I only wish that it would have gone better. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it is 3:09. Thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. We are adjourned.